Thank you.
All right, how many members do we got?
Hello, everyone.
One, two, three, four, four of them. Four members. Jerry, where's your flag? Jerry, where's your flag?
Not tonight, not tonight, sorry.
No flag.
Not at the house tonight, not at the office.
All right.
Sorry, boss.
All right, forget about it, we can do that. Oh, we got the flag.
He has his hat.
Okay, we got the hat.
He got one.
We can salute the hat.
Oh, okay.
Hal's got one.
Forget about the mask. This is what I'm dealing with now? Obi, it's not a mask, that's a hat.
I know.
I got a mask.
I've got a flag, so we can use Hal's flag. No, use your flag, Hal.
I'm getting the ball out of there, I'm getting the ball. Obi, can I pour you some starch?
I would gladly enjoy it. Thank you.
You want to go online, you watch this. And the show begins.
Where'd Abe go?
No, we don't have any, we don't have any members, we have we don't have any of our members.
Okay, I got, I got my mask on.
We've got five.
Abe, Abe, I don't know.
All right.
Asking for it.
Take it off.
We got five members.
I don't see anybody. I see Mayor Gelli. Abe. Charlie.
Mayor Gelli.
He was there before.
Myself.
Now Jude is on.
Mayor Kelly. And Hal Halverson. We've got six members. Six members, we're good to go. One, two, three, four. I'm five. What did I say? Again, one.
Me.
Three, four, four, five, we have five members. Who's?
We've got six, Mayor Gelli's there.
We're missing Langley, you want to call Langley?
I got Judea. We got, we got, we got Judea. We have Avraham. We have Obi. Hal Halverson. Mayor Gelli. Five.
Abe, you want to call Marsh Langley?
I'm six.
Abe.
Yeah, 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 I'm calling, I'm calling.
Okay.
Um, Marsh.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you, Abe. Abe, I don't think Marsh Langley was by the last two meetings. What, on which ones? He was. I don't think he was there at all for the last two meetings.
Right, he was.
He was.
Fran. Fran, will you help me sign?
The last one he wasn't by. Last one he wasn't by.
This meeting he was by.
He's not answering his phone. Let me send him a text message. Send him a text message. Um. Let's see if he's going to see it.
Want me to get Morty Gross or Marshing, but I know they can't vote on BP. Yeah.
They can't, they can't vote on, on which one can't they vote on?
Pine Street. Kansas.
Right. So try Marshing, go on Morty, yeah, try Marsh.
Does anybody know the link to get on? I have questions here.
Marsh does not answer the, the text message.
Is Brian here? I don't see Brian.
Brian is there, I saw, I saw him pop up before.
I am here.
Yeah, Brian is there, I saw him, I saw him pop up before. Delivering.
Does anybody know the link to get on?
Fran, this is Adam, do you need me to forward it to you or forward it to somebody?
I don't know who it is, I just have a phone number.
I have the link, just tell me who to forward it to, um, um.
I'll give you a number, a phone number. Seven four two.
Wait, 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 no, I need an email, you can't forward it to a phone number, I need an email.
Fran, Fran, it's me. Somebody, somebody asked me for it, I sent you a message.
Oh, okay, well. I don't know, Brian, somebody is trying to get on.
Brian is on.
No, the other, it's the other, it's the Brian from the Association for Covington, the intern.
You can't have more than one Brian on a virtual meeting.
I just, I just forwarded the link to, um, Marsh.
Fran, I'll forward it to the other Brian, Fran.
Okay, thank you.
Under Brian Flannery's protest.
Okay. Let me see. Brian McAken.
McIntyre.
Brian McIntyre, oh, there he got on.
Okay, I don't have a board, where is he? I just, what's Ingber's phone number, let me call him.
I'm on, I'm on, just got on.
Oh, you're, you're on, okay, so we got a board. We got a quorum, let's make sure we got a quorum. Naftali. Hal, Obi, Ingber. Myself, myself, and Judea, excellent.
Gelli is there too.
What?
Gelli and Ribbiad.
Gelli, Gelli and Judea, yeah, everyone's on.
Marsh, Marsh will be on in 10 minutes.
Okay. Okay. Marsh will be on in 10 minutes, we don't need him, we got seven as of now.
Marshing can't vote on Pennsies.
Right.
So when Marsh comes, Marsh, Marsh Langley comes on. And Marsh Ingber, I'm dismissed.
Right. Okay.
I have a correspondence first.
Okay, before we begin, before we begin, let's begin. Okay?
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight's meeting has been advertised according to New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Can you close the door? Here.
Mr. Langley, not yet, Mr. Naftali.
Here.
Mr. Ribbiad.
Thank you.
Ribbiad.
He's muted.
Ingber.
Here.
Gross. Here, Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Mr. Halverson.
Here. Okay, um, um, can I have a sleuth to the flag? Obi, please.
Hal.
What?
Hal's got a flag.
We got the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Thank you, Hal.
Thank you. Um, Madam Secretary?
I need the minutes of
The minutes from, from the, which day was that? I don't have my agenda on me.
June 29th.
Can I motion approve the minutes of June 29th minutes? Motion from Hal Halverson, can I have a second? Who was second that one?
Second, second.
Second from, um, Judy Ribbiad, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Gelli. Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson. Hal. Anybody see him, Mr. Halverson, Hal Halverson?
Yeah, I see him, he's muted. He's muted, Hal, we can't hear you.
You did. You did, raise your hand, it's good, it's good, you raise your hand.
Can't see him.
Was I letting him fix it? He has to fix his machine.
No way.
Don't hear anything. Hal? Okay, he raised his hand, next, um.
Mr. Ribbiad.
Yes.
Mr. Ingber.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Halverson.
Yes. Okay. Can I just make a quick announcement, whoever is not on any of the applications, please have your, um, mics muted, so we don't hear. Caller in use, who's the caller? Who called in?
I can't hear anything.
Whoever called in to please announce yourself?
Mike Gross called in because I'm having trouble with the video.
Oh, Mike Gross, you called in, okay, fine, okay.
It's disconnected me.
Okay. Fine, um, Madam Secretary? Do we have any correspondence?
Yes, I do, I have a letter from Brian Flannery. Requesting one year extension for appeal number 4027B. That's Drake Development LLC. Lot 25102, lot 90. 98.04 and 98.05.
Okay, and what's the reason for, who's, who's here representing that?
Brian Flannery. This is the first extension we're requesting, uh, it, it's just running out now because of COVID, we're behind schedule. We're requesting a one-year extension.
Okay, no problem, anyone have any issues with this? No, can I have a motion? Extension?
Motion.
Problem?
Mayor Gelli.
Mayor Gelli, can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Judy Ribbiad, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Hal? There's something wrong with your, with your, with your, um, with your voice. No, now you're on mute. Now you're off mute, but we still can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Maybe, maybe you have, you have headphones, maybe you have headphones attached. No, 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 to the computer, check the computer.
Is the speaker's not, maybe the speaker is not connected to them? Maybe he needs a hammer to press one of the buttons with. I don't know.
Okay, you gave the okay sign, Fran.
Okay. Mr. Ribbiad?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Mr. Ingber?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Mr. Halverson.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I see Mike Gross, I see you're on, I see your, you're, you're still on the phone?
Yeah, I just got on, I just got back on.
Can you then please disconnect your phone?
I did.
So there's, then there's somebody on, okay, now it's off, okay. Fine, okay, got it. Um. Let me see, is, 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 is Marsh Langley on?
Yeah.
What?
Not yet.
Not yet. I have a problem, I can't hear Hal Halverson, it's going to create a problem conducting the meeting, because we might have, need his input.
Mr. Halverson? I don't know if appeal number 4142 can get heard this evening.
Which one is that?
Chedabene Towa. I don't know if we have revised plans. Is Jerry Dasty available?
Yeah, I'm here.
The, the applicant would like to carry that to the next meeting, or to another meeting, they will submit revised plans and renotice.
Okay, they were supposed to give us revised plans, and we told them that if they're not ready for this application, then we will continue, we'll stretch it out to the next month.
Next meeting is September 14th, let me double check that. September 14th.
Can't get on here. Okay. Okay. I don't know what's going on.
Motion, second, Scott. Franny?
Yes.
Okay, to approve this extension? The September 14th? Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
I, I can't. Who made the motion? Jude, can I have a second?
Go second.
Who's second that one?
Obi. A mayor.
Obi, can I, okay, can, Madam Secretary?
Uh, it was Mr. Judy Ribbiad and Mayor Gelli.
Right.
Okay.
Can I have a second?
That's Chedabene Towa.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson, wherever you are, raise your hand. I don't see him at all.
I see him, you raise his hand, but I can't hear him, it's going to become an issue.
He's off mute.
He's off mute, but we still can't hear him, there's something wrong with his computer.
Maybe he should log out and log back in, maybe.
I can't have that.
Maybe?
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Okay, Ribbiad?
Yes.
Ingber, yes, Mr. Gross. Oh, he's not here. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Mr. Halverson.
Yes, okay.
Okay, now.
Now.
Uh, we need Langley for the BM of Pine Street.
I have no idea.
Scott, you can hear you.
Mr. Chairman, can we address Covington?
Um, I need to address Covington, but if I can't, if I can't hear Hal Halverson, then I have a problem, I need to wait till Marsh Langley comes on, so I can dismiss Hal.
The issue was, did Marsh Langley listen to the, and certify that he heard last, last meeting, that's the only, that's another issue.
He told me he did anyway.
Okay. Okay. Um, let's see, Hal's back on, Hal? Where is he? See, can we hear you now? I hear him swearing every once in a while.
It's not somebody else.
I can't hear him.
I think that's Scott.
Fran, can you hear me? Jerry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Make sure Marsh gets the certification, the sign that he's listened to the meetings.
I sure will.
All right, thank you.
Can't hear.
If I can, we, before we even get to that, we're looking to address the request for, for it to be carried, I don't know if we need Hal or, or Mr. Langley in here, uh, if we can be heard on that item.
Give me one minute, please, okay? Okay, I guess, I guess we're going to have to move forward. What are the other applications that we have? Well, I can't move forward to any application, because I, I, I need to get a, see if I can get a full quorum.
The only other application, Chairman, is mine, is 58 Drake, that also is for a use fairing, I need seven members.
Adam, you're okay with Mr. Ingber, but Ingber can't vote on the other one. You're okay with?
As far as I understand, yes.
Okay, Marsh is logging on.
Chairman, the first one on the applica, on the agenda is BM of Pine Street Covington, and now 58 Drake is the third one.
Right. By the way, if we continue, let's continue to talk about BM of, BM of Pine for a moment. Mr. Pennsinger?
Yes, sir.
Are you okay to move forward, because Marsh Ingber is going to disqualify himself for that one? So you're going to have six members?
As long as, how much we have?
Six members?
Yes, as long as I have Mr. Langley.
Okay. Fine. So, he said he's logging on.
With Mr. Langley, that should give us seven for, um, Mr. Penns's application.
Thank you.
It's going to give us six. Because, because I'm going to dismiss Hal, because I can't hear him.
Oh. One second, is, is Hal there?
Hal's there, but I can't hear him.
Hal could call in on his phone.
Something is wrong with his connection, I can't hear him.
Maybe put him on the phone, like Brian says.
If he hits the three dots, right, to the left of the X, it gives you an option, and it'll give him a phone number to call in. So he can still have his screen and see everything, but be able to use the phone for the audio.
That's fine.
I'm just sending Marsh the, the, um, and you just asked me for it. Where is he? Is he there? Come on, where is he? There he is, now Marsh Ingber. Bo Pizza, Hotmail, there he is, okay. Okay. Marsh? Marsh, can you hear me, Marsh, where are you?
Can you hear me now?
I hear you, I don't see you.
I'm saying, one, two, three.
Okay, I don't see you, but I
I'm saying, one, two, three.
Yes, I hear you, oh, there you are, good, got it. Okay, thank you, thank you, okay. Just for the record, Hal, I'm going to dismiss you, because I can't hear you tonight, but you can stay on and listen in if you want. In case you want to join in on next month's meeting, okay?
He could, Abe, he could call in, by, the way, um, Brian just said, next to the X, there's three dots. He could call in and talk.
I'll let him listen in, and when he gets back on, then I'll be able to hear, then I'll be able to listen, and the interim, um, I'm going to seat Marsh Ingber. Um, until, until Hal can log in, and, and then we can have a internal conference with him back and forth. Moving forward.
Can't listen to BM of Pine Street.
What'd you say?
He can't listen.
He can't vote on that one.
Who can vote on it?
Marshing can't vote on BM of Pine Street.
Right, I know that, so we're okay, we're going to move forward without Marsh Ingber on it.
Right.
Okay. Okay, Marsh Langley, you can hear us?
Yes, BM of Pine Street, we're doing now?
No, 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 now we're going to discuss Covington, Covington, um, Covington for a moment, okay?
We're discussing, or it's an application?
Um, they want to, well, I'll let them, I'll let them bring, introduce it, but they, the discussion is going to be about, um, postponing the hearing till next month, next hearing, which is September. And, and let them present their case, why? And then we'll call the board, should or shouldn't.
Chairman, this is Michael J. Gross, Giordano Haller and Sisla, representing Covington Village. Uh, I have with me my co-counsel on this matter, Adam Pfeffer. Um, we, uh, sent a, a email to Fran this morning, requesting that it be carried. Uh, after the last hearing, uh, the board was inundated with a number of emails, both for and against, uh, the application, uh, as late as today, as a matter of fact. Uh, so we have not obviously had a chance to formulate a cohesive response to all of those, we don't want to waste the board's time. What we'd like to do is take all of those comments, formulate a response, submit it to the board, came prior to the September meeting, so the board has that response. And, uh, we can then move forward. So we would simply request that the matter be carried until the September meeting.
Okay. So if, let's just, um, go, we left off at the last meeting, at the last meeting, we basically left, um, guys, whoever thinks I'm wrong, just pitch in over here, I think we left off at the last meeting. Then we're going to look at how to height the, the, uh, issues. And we're going to see if there's any objections from the state, um, to come forward. And right now, we haven't seen any rectification from you, all we have seen is, um, people from the state coming forward, um, putting on for the application. So it's my understanding that if you don't bring forward a, a revised plan, we will then, um, vote, based on what we have seen. Um, is that, is that, is that correct, guys, or not?
So, Chairman?
Noise.
Noise, noise.
Can we stop? I mean, Jesus, what's going on?
Well, who's backing over there, sounds like I'm going to Marsh, stop walking.
Chairman, this is Jerry Dasty, and may I say something, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. I spoke, I spoke briefly with, uh, with you, and with Mike Gross, and of course with Fran over the last few days about this.
Right.
As I understand the request from the applicant, it's to have an opportunity to respond to, what I'm going to say is close to 20 or so emails that have come in. Some, some of which were in opposition to the application, a few of which were in favor of the application.
Correct.
So the applicant wants an opportunity to respond, now, we're under unique circumstances here with COVID-19. We're getting emails from people, but the, in effect, the applicant wants an opportunity, if not to cross-examine, which would normally be, is, right, but under the circumstances, it's not going to be cross-examination, because, you know, the, the, the witnesses can't come to the meeting. Uh, he wants an opportunity to respond. So frankly, uh, I don't think that's, uh, an unreasonable request under these rather unique circumstances. We have now three attorneys representing the applicant. Including Mr. Pfeffer, Mr. Gross, and, uh, the applicant's wife, Mrs. Todd Gill, I think it's called, I'm sorry for mispronouncing it. We have a lot of new information that came in this month from interested parties. And the applicant should have an opportunity, if not to cross-examine those people, at least to be able to provide a response. And I think that's only appropriate. So that's my two cents.
Okay, so my question then is, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
One minute, Halverson? I have, um, I tried to count the responses. And that is approximately 24 opposed, position, and petition, with 116 names on it that were opposed. Locust landings, that's opposed, and five in favor. Five, could be six.
Okay. By the way, that 116 numbers, a lot of doubles, it was husband and wives on that list over there, if you like a closer look. Okay?
Um. I don't know how to do it to count, but close.
Mr. Gross, question for you. Um, the purpose of you postponing this meeting is to, is to just give us a response, or to go further into the application? Because I want to consider this application closed, but if you want this as a purpose, just to respond to those meetings and to give us your response, that's one thing, but if you would like to go forward and, and, and do some more work or legwork behind it, that's a different story, because then we have to start all over again from scratch, which I'm really not in the mood of.
Right, and, and we're not in the mood for that either. Um, some of the, some of the, uh, comments did comment on some of the recreational facilities that we proposed, really in, in response to the board's uh, direction, uh, back in October, when they denied the original application. Um, so we might want to, they didn't want some of these recreational facilities. And the only thing we would do, Mr. Chairman, is when we review all those responses, we might just remove some of those, if they're really objectionable. That's the only thing we would, that's the only thing different with, that we would do. But other than that, we do, we merely want to have an opportunity to respond to these comments. If as a result of these comments, the board would like to see some change in the recreational facilities, of course, we'll, we'll, we'll abide by the, by the board's recommendations. But other than that, we really, the primary purpose here, as Mr. Dasty indicated, is to be able to respond to these comments.
And, and if I could just add, that's Adam Pfeffer.
Yes, Adam.
Is, we, we are, we are going to try and have a meeting with the association itself, because many of the emails that are coming in, in our opinion, are just misinformation, uh, not understanding the plan, not understanding the application. We believe that a lot of the issues are going to go away, as, as Mr. Dasty indicated, we would have the right to, to go for, go through each email, as opposed to us spending the entire night going email by email, and showing why now everything in there is correct. through each email, as opposed to us spending the entire night going email by email and showing why now everything in there is correct. We would like the opportunity to meet with the with the the board and go over it. Additionally, I don't want the 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 board to think that this applicant has sat since last meeting doing nothing. There's been a lot of work that's gone in to address some of the issues, but we don't. We don't want to do this in piecemeal. We like to do this one one time, come back in 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 but days, 45 days, and address all these items that have been raised. Um, I believe there were a lot of stuff raised by the board last time.
Okay, um, I haven't. I have a slight issue with that, and but I saw I saw Avram Aftali raise his hand. He wanted to say something. Avram, go ahead.
Yes, I I I requested among these, actually before even all these emails started coming in, I requested that that one of the main issues here is to see what people agreed or disagreed. I requested a copy of those minutes of what was what was addressed at those meetings that apparently 83% of people agreed upon. I was. The answer we got was a letter from a lawyer saying 83% of the people agreed. Thank you. Where were the minutes? We have no idea what was spoken about, what what agreed, who was there, who spoke, who didn't speak. Nothing of that was addressed. That bothers me a little bit, that that could be a response to all of the objections, because I can not. I we can see exactly what was discussed, what was not discussed. Are they true? They're not true. Like this, I I we're up in the air. I I I'm a little bit bothered with that.
So Mr. McIntyre, who is who's the attorney for the association is on this is at this meeting, and at the next meeting, we would expect him to indicate all those all those facts. Who was there? How the vote was taken? What kind of information was presented, et cetera, in addition to responding to the comments and in addition to meeting with with the association?
So we need all that. We wanted all that done for tonight's meeting and not for another 45 days. That was. That is my my great concern. One second, before we can continue, I saw much like we wanted to say something. Myish.
Uh, thank you. Um, uh, this is a partially a question for Jerry's opinion also. Um, I I Jerry has indicated that he would he would like that we um give the applicant a chance to respond to these emails. Um, Mr. Gross has said that the only change in. I'm sorry, Mr. Gross has mentioned uh that the only change on the plan that he would be making was um to the uh layout playgrounds or little minor changes. But doesn't seem like the 55 and older restriction is on the table on their end. Uh, Jerry, I'm I'm not sure I want to vote for anything that's under 55. Do you do your uh recommendation to wait on a vote still stand?
Uh, yes, it uh.
Jerry, you're on mute. Jerry, okay, you're up.
Yes, it does, Mr. Langley. And the reason is, the reason I said earlier. Um, be pre-COVID-19, everyone who has sent an email would have shown up at the meeting and testified under oath. And Mr. Gross's client and his Mr. Gross and and Mr. Pfeffer would have an issue to to, you know, ask some questions. Uh, do you know, but we haven't a non and no disrespect to any of the people who sent the emails in, they're not under oath. It's an email. And and Mr. Gross's client has the right, it seems to me, to have the opportunity to respond and and to ask those people some questions or present testimony or proof in opposition to it. So despite how you feel or not feel about the the age um change. That's part of the application. That's coming in later on. Um, I think you should strongly consider adjourning this to September. Many of the emails, by the way, Moish, were about the age issue. Many of the emails were to the effect, hey, you know, when I bought in here, it was gonna be 55 over. And now it's not going to be adjoining property. So that's one of the issues in the emails that I think that the applicant has the right to respond to.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Jerry. And I just want to re- um, I will follow your opinion, Jerry, but I want the applicant, part of the questions, what the that the applicant should understand where I'm my position is on the restriction is I showed my cards, so you should understand the where I'm holding with the 55. It's not just about playgrounds and uh and those kind of things. If you can work something out, uh, I will follow Jerry's advice blindly, but I wanted to give the applicant a a chance to understand about where I'm holding with the 55 restriction.
Mayor Gelli wanted to say something. Mayor, go ahead.
Jerry, your advice is very sound, and what you're saying is we should be safer and wait till we can be heard in live. So really, what we're saying is not September till the next time we are available to be sitting in the courtroom.
Sure, that that's.
Might not be till January or February.
Well, Fran Fran controls the the agenda. She's the boss. Sorry, Chairman.
I thought she does.
You know, there's an issue with keeping on postponing this onto onto whenever we go live, because as per the mayor, he has no idea when we're gonna go live in the courtroom. We just had the discussion, not me, but somebody in the planning board had a discussion with the mayor yesterday. And he has no idea when the township building is gonna open up again.
Okay, we're we're certainly willing to proceed, you know, virtually.
Who's speaking?
Mr. Gross.
Mr. Gross, go ahead, Mr. Gross.
I said, we we're not asking to wait until it's live. We're we're willing to proceed as Mr. Dasty advised.
Got it. Judah, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just I just want to say, you know, as per Jerry, uh, there's I think there's two issues. The original objection was brought up by Mr. Aftali that there were object objectives that were sending in emails, and he felt that it was important. And one of the reasons why this was pushed off originally, because he wanted to have everybody live. Um, I think in a in a perfect world, if you could do it live, that would be the very best thing, and it would give the opportunity for the applicant to be able to question any objector. But to wait at this point, I think, would would be helpful for all parties, because if the applicant is able actually able to sit down with the objectors and be able to allay their fears, so then the application come back and then it would be in the hands of the board to decide if they want to vote it up or down.
But I just. Judah, I just told Mr. Gross that he doesn't want to wait. He can. He doesn't mind moving forward. No, no, I understand. He wants to move forward by the next meeting, and I'm I'm. That's fine. So if he doesn't. We'll just move forward. The only the only only objection I have with pushing this thing off is um, which is according to Jerry, which is very sound and right. The only fear that I have is that we're gonna wait 45 days. He's gonna write us a response, which he's entitled to, and then he's gonna have a meeting with the board of their with the board of directors over there. And they're gonna change the whole plan over again. So we're gonna start over again from scratch. There won't be any people from the Covington Village here again. They're gonna start emails again. It'll be pushed off to the next month, because they all want to respond. And it's gonna go like a ping pong back and forth, which I can't. I don't want to um procrastinate and make it and happen.
Well, we don't. We don't either. We expect to 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 reach finality at at the September meeting, Mr. Chair.
You know, and what are you gonna do if you're gonna create a new set of plans, and I'm gonna start getting new emails?
Well, we're not. We're not gonna create a new set of plans. The only thing we would do is that the board request that we remove some of the recreational facilities will remove them. Other than that, we're resting on plans.
The question. The question over here is not just the playing field or the ballgame or the or the playground. That's not the question. There's many other issues here that we all feel that we have a problem with. So i- if it isn't what Jerry Dasty is saying, that you want to have live? Or is it what you're saying is you want another month to come online? Next month, when everybody's gonna be still on Zoom on this dialing system, the emails are still not gonna be um testimony.
If I can address if I can address that that question. So part of it, part of what we've been working on is is dealing with all these comments that were coming in a little bit from the board and post from from the the homeowners. We've done a lot of work and a lot of stuff, and I'll tell you, if you look at the plans, you don't see the full picture. We've spent a lot of time, energy and money doing aerial photos, uh, putting together, trying to put together a a formal response. See the response, and I believe the board members, uh, homeowners see the response and see what the actual changes are gonna look like. Besides for just some lines on a paper, but actual graphical pictures and topography, and they show the difference. There's a there's a very big story that's not being told by our application. So when Mr. Gross is indicating that our plans aren't probably gonna change, it's it. That is correct, but the actual story that we've told is is gonna change on paper.
So you're changing the story on paper, so therefore you're opening to new testimony, and therefore we're gonna have another round of another round of emails. It's exactly what I don't want.
Mr. Chairman, that's not exactly what I said at all.
Adam, give me a second, Adam. Adam. I Jerry was right what he said, but if you're gonna start bringing in and and adding new testimony by code, I have to open it to the public. That means by code, I need new emails. And 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 then it's all gonna start all over again. That's exactly what I don't want.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, when when the emails come in from the objectors and for the people in favor of it, if they were in a room, we have the right to cross-examine to the extent that I can call any of my professionals again to give testimony in 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 redirect against. So when you're saying that we don't have the right, this is exactly what we're talking about. We're not changing the application.
You are administering new testimony. You are presenting new.
I would have the right to do.
Mr. Pfeffer, please stop for a second. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Chairman, as I understand, assuming for the sake of the discussion that we were to grant the adjournment to, let's say, September, and let's say that we're still operating with this crazy system and we're not live.
Right.
Uh, it would be with the understanding that there will not be effectively new testimony. As I understand it, Mr. Gross has told me he wants to appear, I think, a written response to the emails. Perhaps, you know, each one individually as to why Mrs. Jones is against it now and for the sake of the discussion. She was in favor of it before, that kind of thing. Uh, so if he if if the applicant wants to go, you know, point by point against the other um, uh, the the other emails, as a condition, you should have to provide that in writing at least 10 days before the hearing so that it's on file, number one. As I understand it, from the applicant, they're not changing the plans. There's nothing new for Terry to have to see. Uh, if we if if they move the right building or the recreation area, that's, you know, that's a no-brainer. You've already heard from their planner. You've heard from their engineer. You've heard from Mr. uh Kettle, their traffic expert. They're not gonna testify again, as far as I know, as far as I'm concerned. They're not gonna test. They're done. There's nothing new they're gonna testify about. So with the understanding that there won't be live testimony from Mr. Gross and Mr. Pfeffer's client, but rather they will provide written responses to the writings we already received, and we'll have those 10 days before the meeting.
So so if that is that my understanding, that it'll only be a written response to the to the to the um, um, 20, 30 plus emails that came in, the pros and cons, and that's it? And with that, I will close, and I would ask if any board member has any further comment or pull the board to see if you want to postpone this or not.
Well, just a second. Uh, Mr. Pfeffer and Mr. Gross, did I say that correctly?
You did.
Okay.
Okay, so with that in mind, that we will only see one response back from Mr. Gross to the 30 email, 30 plus emails we got. And with that, I would like to ask for a motion to postpone this hearing or to go for the vote as it is right now.
Motion.
Motion for what?
To postpone the hearing till September.
To September. I have a motion from my my Schlangy.
Second.
A second from um, Obi Gonzalez. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Chairman, just a moment. I want. I I believe that motion to adjourn should include the applicant should have to re-notice, because it's 45 days away. The applicant should have to re-notice for the hearing.
Okay.
Objection.
Okay.
That is the motion. The way Jerry said it, that's the motion.
So I have a motion from 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 my Schlangy, and I have a motion from Obi Gonzalez, that we will only see a response from um, um, counsel of the of 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 the applicant to the to the 30 plus emails that we received. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halberston, is he there?
Mr. Hobson, I dismissed because I can't hear him, so we we were seated on my Schlangy and Luke.
Okay, Mr. Langley.
Oh, woman, a woman. Um, Hal, can I hear you? Did you say something? What?
Give you a thumbs up, Hal.
Hal, I no, can I hear you?
He can hear you, but he can't vote.
I can't vote. He can't hear him. Okay, go ahead. Myish, uh, Madam Secretary, please.
Mr. Langley, Mr. Aftali.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Aftali said yes.
Uh, Mr. Ingber, we left on this one, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Mr. Halberston?
Yes.
Did you forget about me?
Remember, we will see you back here. We're just with that one response. Thank you.
What about what about poor Mr. Rivian? I think we missed him somehow.
Where is he? Judah? Where's Judah?
Ribby Judah?
There he is. Yeah.
He said yes, right?
Yes.
Harry, okay.
Okay.
We're carrying this to September 14th. I assume it's going to be virtual, and they have to re-notice.
Yes. Okay. We will now continue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, and have a wonderful night. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Okay, whoever is um of this, um, I would like to ask anyone who's not further involved with any further applications to please dismiss so we can keep the bandwidth going for other people to log on.
That's right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna log off.
Moving forward, we're gonna moving forward, we're gonna go to congregation, Bene Torah, Mo Shingber, you're gonna have to disqualify yourself. But please don't disappear, because we need you back for Drake Road.
All right, if if somehow you can always call me on myself to log back on.
What'd you say?
That if when you get up to the last application, if I'm still not on, call me and I'll log right back on.
You got it. Thank you.
Did you mention to the chair? Didn't you mention that Drake Road was off for this? Wasn't that?
Drake Road is on. 58 Drake is on.
Drake Road is on. Okay, congregation, Bene Torah. Madam Secretary.
Okay.
Congregation Pine Street, I'm sorry.
Pine Street, appeal number 4147. I have a report from Terry Boat. Um, dated July 9. Just read this here. This property has previously been the subject of an application in June 2019 to subdivide the tract and construct two condos and two duplex dwellings. The board denied that application. At the day 20th, 20, May 2020 board hearing, the applicant's professionals were requested to revisit the design concept, address potential circulation issues in the vicinity of the MLK Drive and Pine Street intersection. As depicted on the revised design plans, all parking and driveway accesses except the single-family dwelling on proposed lot 13.01 and that proposed on MLK Drive over 100 feet north of the intersection. 13.01, which will have access from Pine Street, has a dedicated turnaround to eliminate the need to back out onto Pine Street. We believe these circulation revisions are a significant improvement versus the previously submitted design.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Members of the board, Abraham Penzer are be on appearing on behalf of the applicant. I would like to first personally thank on behalf of the applicant, Myish Langree for for the ideas that he gave to the other members of the board at the last hearing. As you will note, we have incorporated, or at least tried to, we believe we have incorporated almost all of the ideas of the board, and certainly the ideas are really stunning and great ideas. As you note, one of the major points that Mr. Langree raised was the idea to get off as much as possible anything facing Pine Street. We achieved that, that almost everything is on to Martin Luther King. The only thing that's on is a single-family house. And with the other suggestion, we made it that it's not backed out, that it has a driveway inside internally so they could turn around and not go out as well. All of these are suggestions that were given, and we do appreciate them. They certainly enhance it and certainly make things better. So before I introduce Brian, we have the applicant, want to thank the board for this idea, and to the message is the board, the as as much as the board is trying to help us, the applicant wants the board to know that the applicant is listening to the board and is incorporating all of their suggestions. And for that matter, if tonight you have other suggestions, we will be happy to put them in as well. We're working to this on a team effort, and we do appreciate it. And without any further ado, I would ask that Brian Flannery be sworn in.
You do the poll department.
Hi.
I can't hear you.
Mr. Flannery, I'm sorry. Mr. Flannery, do you swear or affirm that the whole truth is helping us?
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, this property, as I'm sure the board remembers, is at the corner of Pine Street and Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. At the previous meeting, we indicated that it's in a split zone between the R75 and the R10. The uh, the area of the. The area of the R10 is a small area that in the 2007 master plan, there was a recommendation to change it to R75. It never was changed by the governing body, and by the time of the 2017 master plan, there was no need to ask for it to be changed to R75 because most of it was already developed in an R75 fashion. I had to pick out the smaller lots, 6,000 square foot and less for single-family lots in the area just to see how this project fits into the area. As indicated in Terry's report, we're looking for six lots. It would be two duplex buildings to the north of the site, a single-family home on Pine Street, more than 100 feet from the intersection with Dr. Martin Luther King, next to the existing single-family home that already exists to the east of this property. And then the shul would be on the corner with the parking lot pushed north from Dr. Martin Luther King to keep the turning movements away from the intersection. As indicated in Terry's report, these changes have created a situation that provides for a much better traffic impact. And as Mr. Penzer indicated, the board's comments have certainly helped to make this a better project. We get to page four of Terry's report with respect to the variance relief that's needed. Item 1 indicates the reason we're here is because we have duplexes with lot areas less than what's required to have duplexes in the zone so that it's a conditional use. We don't meet the conditions with respect to that. So this needs a de-variance from the zoning board. I gave testimony last time on the other uses in the area and how the lots we're proposing to a large extent exceed other developed properties in the area, and that fits in with the area. And it also takes a piece of property that had an existing congregation in a trailer on the west side of Dr. Martin Luther King, provides an appropriate place for them to worship, and then provides housing opportunities in the areas remaining on the site. So in item 2 in the report, less minimum lot area variance is required for Lot 13.01, which is the single-family not lot next to the existing single-family home on Pine Street. Because it's in an R10, 10,000 square feet is required. We provided 7,600 square feet, which exceeds an R75 requirement and greatly exceeds a lot of the existing dwellings in the area. Comment 3 in the report is respect to lot area for the duplex lots 3 and 4, where we have areas of 11,201 for the duplex lot in the R10 zone and 9,300 square feet for the duplex that's in the R75 zone. Again, these are slightly less than the area requirements that are required. Due to the development nature of this area, it would be my opinion that those variances that we're asking for are appropriate, and we would be de minimis with respect to the impact on the area. Then we get to minimum lot width variance for Lot 13.01, and you can see that it's a triangular-shaped lot due to the nature of the property. We're asking for a lot width of 65 feet, where 75 feet is required. Again, I could show you on the text map the many lots in the area that are much less than the 65 feet that we're proposing. Minimum front yard setback for the shul building, which is Lot 13.02, of 15 feet, where 30 feet is required. And this is a corner lot. We designed a shul that has some dimension to it and fits in. And if you remember at the last meeting where we were said to move the parking and access points away from it, my suggestion was that a little bit of relief with respect to the front setback in this area, provided there's plenty of site distance, which this design does, would greatly enhance the availability to do that properly. Item 7 is minimum rear yard setback for Lot 13.02. Again, the existing shul. It's kind of hard to say which is a front and which is a rear here. The front door being soared toward Dr. Martin Luther King, that makes the easterly side the rear. We have 10 feet. 10 feet is to the proposed residences, so anybody purchasing that residence is gonna know that the shul is in that location. And to them, it's a side yard setback, which really would not impact them, and especially in light of the fact that they'll be knowing what's there before they buy it. An aggregate side yard setback for Lot 13.01, which is the single-family lot, we have 10 feet on each side, where a combined 25 is required. Maximum building coverage for the shul, Lot 13.02, we have 25.5% where 25% is required. Certainly, it is something that allows an inherently beneficial use and provides a proper shul for a local neighborhood congregation is certainly a benefit, in my opinion. The maximum building coverage for the duplex lot, 13.03 and 13.04, the combined building coverage is 30.69%, where 30% is allowed. And again, the 30% is an R10 requirement, and this is more in the nature of an R75 area. Maximum building coverage for the R75 lot is at 38.9%, where 35% is required. Again, it's a duplex that fits in well with the developed nature of the area. We have a single-family along Pine Street. There is a duplex directly behind the duplex lot. And a perimeter buffer variance is required for the shul, and any of the perimeter buffers to the shul relate to the new homes that are being built, and we will provide fences for them. With respect to the justification for the use variance and the bulk variance that are required, if you look at the master plan of 2017, page 2 under background information, it goes into all the births and where Lakewood is going. And it concludes, based on this information, it is important to lay with the plan for the residential development to house its growing population. And this does this. It provides an inherently beneficial use, a proper shul for the congregation, and it takes advantage of the remaining areas on the site to provide some diverse housing opportunities. Page 7 of the same 2017 master plan under the vision statement, it says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. And it's my testimony, this does this. There's one house existing on that lot. It's certainly an underutilized lot. Under master plan strategies on the same master plan on page 8, 1A is create a range of housing opportunities, and we're doing that here. F is strengthen a direct development toward existing communities, and this does that as well. 7 is encourage the redevelopment of existing underutilized sites, and certainly that fits well with this. On the page 23 of the report, under traffic and parking, it says traffic congestion and shortage of parking have been ongoing problems in Lakewood. These issues must be addressed. This can be done in part with sound land use printing that promotes reduced reliance on private vehicles through compact development, footprints, facilities, access, and public transport. And when this application first came in, we had a list of where all the congregants are and that most of them can walk, but we're still providing 20 parking spaces where the ordinance indicates we need 19. So we're exceeding the parking requirement for a shul that a lot of the congregants walked to. When it was a, in the previous meeting, we had members of congregation that indicated the percentage of them that walked and how close their driveways were. The Minnesota Land Use Law, NJAC 40,55D, under the purpose of the act, are to encourage the municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estate in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my testimony that this property does that. We need a de-variance where we have to show the special reasons. And one of them that this is a uniquely situated piece of property from both the fact that we have an underutilized site here, and we have a congregation that was congregating on the other side of the street. It fits these properties, the single matching up to the single, the duplexes to the duplex, and just developing the piece of property in that fashion. So it's my testimony that the board can grant this without any substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. This is a, the shul is an inherently beneficial use. The housing opportunities that are provided certainly benefit the general welfare of the township. Continuing in Terry's report, it indicates the design waivers that were needed for parking within five feet adjacent to a residential use. And we would provide a fence along the property line. Again, that parking is to the proposed houses, not any existing ones. Design waivers required for not providing street trees along Martin Luther King Drive and Pine Street. And we have submitted a landscaping plan, which I think meets the intent of the ordinance. And we certainly will provide trees where they fit. And I think in following the board's guidance on moving the development away from the intersection, we have areas where some trees will fit, not a typical streetscape where they're spaced every 50 feet, but the same number of trees could be spaced in there. So we're asking for a waiver to strictly comply with the ordinance, but it's our opinion we're complying with the intent of the ordinance.
Mr. Flannery, on that design waiver about the street trees, what are you going to do in lieu of the, if we grant the design waiver? I'm not exactly sure I understand.
Well, we presented a landscaping plan that, in my opinion, satisfies the intent of the ordinance. During resolution compliance, to the extent that the board engineer feels additional trees would be needed to, so that his opinion would be the same, that we meet the intent of the ordinance, we would provide additional trees where they fit as directed by the board engineer.
The AC zone.
I can clarify, Chairman.
Aye. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think what Brian's asking, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, you're looking to not necessarily strictly comply with the letter of the UDO with respect to street trees. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Are you done, Brian?
I can go through all of Terry's comments or just say that we'll satisfy them. And if the board wants to ask any questions, I can address them or I can go through the pages of the report, whatever the board would rather hear.
Okay. No, it's okay. We're on Zoom, and we'll trust you because we know you for a long time.
Mr. Flannery, let me ask you a couple more questions. Excuse me, Chairman. That Google, the Google area map that you just pointed to, will reference that as A3? Does that sound fine?
That sounds good.
All right, now, in going back to Terry Vote's report of July 9, just so that I get it straight, on page 5 regarding the design waivers, there's no space for required fencing and landscape buffer. Did you address that?
The, we're gonna provide a fence because there is area for a fence. And due to the fact that the buffer is to proposed housing, it's my opinion that the fence will satisfy the intent of the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, I can clarify, Chairman.
Go ahead.
The design waiver in question is in reference to parking being within the five-foot buffer itself. The fence is a remedy to offset the visual impact.
There's really no, there's no real buffer. It's always the fence. A real buffer would be 15 feet or 20 feet with trees and everything else. But I understand that. Okay.
Terry, do I understand that you don't have any objection to the design waivers? That seems to be the way it is in your letter. Terry Vote.
That is correct. As long as the board is comfortable deferring the final landscape changes between lot and lot.
Thank you.
Okay. So let me just, I heard, Brian, I heard what you had to say. Let me just give you, first of all, I wanted to commend Congregation Benet Torah. We started out over here with a two-shul project, really shun-horrend.
It's not Benet Torah.
I'm sorry, Congregation Pine Street. I wanted to commend you that from two shuls to three duplexes, we're down to one shul, one single-family house, and two duplexes. So we're getting there, but we're not there yet. We're almost there, okay? I just want to just point out two issues or three issues that I have and see how you can fix those minor issues, okay? Number one, on Pine Street, where you have 30 feet, 30 feet is required, you only are putting down 20, 15 feet. However, you also have a set of stairs right in that 15 feet. Even though stairs down is not part of your front yard, is not part of the side yard or front yard setback, especially if it's going down. I believe it's not going down. It's going out from the shul. I saw the blueprints. It's going out from the shul. So now, you're not 15 feet, you're about 11 or 12 feet from there. If you can somehow move this shul, this set of stairs to the back of the building or to the other side, and any which way possible, make 15 feet closer to 20, that'll be wonderful. Number two. Number two, on the two duplex houses, there is absolutely no front greenery in front of those houses. It's all, it's all blacktop from one side all the way down to the end. You can have a basketball court, a hockey court, a tennis court, and a volleyball court. I have a single problem because there's not a blade of green grass in front of. If there's any which way possible to fix it, these are my two main issues here. It just doesn't look presentable where you have four parking lots, four parking spots, three plus one sticking out. And it just doesn't, you know, it just doesn't look right. It doesn't look aesthetically pleasing in front of a house. I know the reason. The reason is because you went from 65 to 75 feet. But somehow, normally when we do a variance of 65 feet, somehow it fits. I don't know why on this particular project, these four spots don't fit. These are currently my two major objections here that I would like to see somehow somewhat remedied and fixed. Anyone else? I think Mosh Langree wanted to say something before. Mosh, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. And Terry, maybe you can help me go through these things. I have a couple of safety questions, some parking questions, and some questions about the synagogue, which will be for eight. So let's go through some safety questions I have first. Terry and Brian, if you can weigh in on this. Fencing on Martin Luther King Drive, and I guess for the single-family house on Pine Street, there is a pedestrian walkway, a busy pedestrian walkway along that route. Fencing, trees, buffer, landscaping, we have to be extremely careful that it doesn't block views someone pulling out of the driveway. Is there any problem limiting the size of the fence for those two duplexes on Martin Luther King Drive and for the synagogue, the ones closest to the street? What do you guys recommend for line of sight in those areas?
We are gonna be looking at the fencing and landscaping, the design concepts. In compliance, as far as fencing goes, there's a UDO requirement in front yards that says that the maximum height of fencing in a front yard setback can be no more than four feet. If the board wants it to be less than that, it can certainly stipulate in the approval. But that's a standard requirement where you have frontages and you have accesses to win that through. I believe what you're bringing up, Moshe, is part of Brian's request to work with us. The UDO says you have to have X street trees every 50 feet. To try to abide by that may potentially create site issues. So I think that's kind of tailored to what your concern is.
Correct.
And that's something that we can certainly look at in compliance. The other thing is, there's typically a viewscape, I believe it's between 2 and 1/2 feet, 7 and 1/2 feet above ground, where you don't want something there. What that means is you may want to go perhaps with a higher street tree. That's not gonna block as opposed to a hedgerow, which could create a visibility issue. Follow what I'm saying? Follow what I'm saying?
I got you. The question is, should we even put, you know, this, in this area where it seems like it's all driveways? It's unusual where we might request no trees at all. You know, it might, I, I'm, I'm deferring to the, to the engineers who are, who know these things better than I do. Brian and Terry, I would like your input. If, I, I, obviously that's exactly what Brian was asking for. But I can see in this circumstance, to give you leeway to decide about the safety issues, about trees, definitely no shrubs, evergreens or anything. And to consider maybe even a shorter fence, even though the, the UDO says four feet. I don't know if it's better or not better, but I, I would like you and Brian to discuss it and maybe get, you know, you know, get the professionals to input the safety for the people walking up and down on this block on Martin Luther King. And even for the single-family on Pine, if, if it makes sense to maybe, I don't know, a three-foot fence, a two-and-a-half-foot fence. I would, you and Brian should knock heads and figure out what would make it the safest in that area.
I think that's good, Moshe. The other thing that we can look at is that, you know, obviously we don't want to look at solid fencing. You know, we can look at chain link with the wider ramping where, you know, it, it's not going to be a solid street. You're going to be.
That makes sense, I can hear that, okay. Yeah, so if a kid's walking down, a short kid, you know, a 10-year-old child is only maybe three feet tall, you know, someone backing out can see that. Let me get your opinion.
I expect him to ask me questions about shul living.
You're talking to me, Abe?
To stay on the line with me.
One more question. This is also for you, Brian and Terry. It's all strictly a safety, I need your input, I don't, I'm not sure if it's a good idea or not. People, like again, people walk up and down Martin Luther King and Pine, it's a busy street. What can you do in the driveways and especially in the synagogue driveway to slow down people from coming in and out? I don't know if slowing speed bump might not be a good idea, caution, yellow. Some kind of recommendation from you guys to put heightened securities for people, safety for people walking up and down Martin Luther King Drive?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what we can do on the residential driveways. There are measures that can be taken on the synagogue access. Just thinking out loud, signage obviously is easy. We may want to put a stop bar and a stop sign going out on the Martin Luther. The other thing that you can look at, and we can go over this with the engineers. There are traffic calming options that you can make at that driveway area.
Jerry, Jerry, Terry, give me a minute, Terry. Abe, if you want to speak on the phone, please put yourself on mute. Abe?
I'm not sure.
Abe Penza.
Abe Penza, if you want to speak on the phone, please put you on mute.
In order to answer Mr. Langry's questions, I wanted to get them on the shul on the phone, so I apologize.
That's fine, I have no problem with that, but put your, your, your video on mute so I don't have to hear your conversation.
I have nothing to hide, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not a question of hiding, it's a question of.
Couldn't hear.
With the process, okay?
Okay, like I was saying, Moshe, there are things that can be done. One thing I've seen which is pretty effective, you can change the texture of the paving on the drive. There's ways of doing it. You basically make it a brick-type texture where you're going from asphalt into a, a, a brick or a next concrete. There are things you can do. You know, I, I'm not sure what, what we can do on the residential driveways. We can definitely look at signage and traffic calming measures on the synagogue.
Chairman, this is Jerry Dastie. Once again, and to pick up what Mr. Penzer said earlier. Frankly, the board really should have a lot of kudos here because of the depth in which you've reviewed this application. Mr. Langry's suggestions are very, very good. And my suggestion, my recommendation would be that if, in fact, without specifying exactly what's going to be done in terms of fencing, the number of trees, we'll make sure they don't block anything and the signage. My suggestion is, as we've done many times, we leave that to the reasonable decision of our engineer during resolution compliance or while the site is being constructed. Once the driveways are getting in, then perhaps Mr. Vogt's staff can have a better idea of where the trees should be, where the signs should be, what we would put as a condition of the approval, assuming you want to go that way. That would all be taken care of at the time of resolution. I'll specifically point those out in the, in the resolution. They will be addressed at the time.
I, I think that's a good idea, Jerry, particularly with the residential lots because they're going to be subject to plot plan review anyway.
Yep, Mr. Langry, how's that sound?
Sounds good. I just wanted to make sure that it was going to be oversight and the applicant has no problem to giving the professionals the oversight. Sometimes board members who are not professionals, we make recommendations and then I hear back from, from other professionals, oh, that was a pretty dumb idea, like the air conditioning on the roof. I hear back, you know, but we might think, we don't build every day, but we look at plans every day, so, you know. But I just want to make sure that the applicant is okay with giving Terry and the engineers.
We'll have our permission and our blessing.
Okay.
And the recommendations the applicant concurs with will make it a better.
Okay, I got two more questions and then I'll let the other people talk. Is there a problem? And it's probably a township committee question. This whole area in front of this project, no street parking.
The applicant would be, would be happy as a condition of approval if the board acts favorably to write a letter to the governing body indicating that it is the, the board's opinion, it should be no parking and the applicant would request it.
And in your opinion, Brian, a letter like that, what, what are the chances that it actually happens that way? Township has no problem with it or what's your opinion?
Township should have no problem with it and due to the unique nature of this property, I would think the owners in close proximity would all be in agreement and, and there should be no problem with that occurring.
And I'm.
Have you understood, Chairman? Chairman, Mr. Terry?
One second, Terry, I just want to put my two cents in, Moish. It's not going to happen.
It's what?
It's not going to happen.
What's not going to happen?
The township won't, won't, by the time township is going to act to put a no off-street parking, on-street parking over there, if your beard isn't wide enough, it'll be a lot wider.
I, I think something like this is a safety issue and I don't know if we should make it a condition of the approval. I'll leave that up to Jerry. Is that asking too much to make it a condition of the approval?
Well, I, I think it is, Mr. Langry. But I think a condition of approval would be that the applicant makes a good faith effort to speak by letter and will get copies of the letters with the township committee about doing that. Now, we can't.
We have no problem with that.
Yeah, we can't make it a condition of approval that, that the township committee agrees because, you know, no one's here to speak for the committee. But I think a condition of approval would be that they make a good faith effort to convince the committee not to allow parking along their property, off-street, you know, on-street.
We would agree to Jerry, your idea of copying you with all correspondence so you'd know we'd make a good faith effort and you would see what we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry, that's how we'll go about it. One more, one more, let me address the synagogue. Catering hall in the basement, what are we doing?
That's for internal use only, local. We, we're a local shul of the year for Shabbos. We're not looking to go out catering. Basically speaking, the function of the shul is not so much on during the weekday. It's, it's really more on a, on a Shabbos basis. If you went there right now, Mr. Willner, I have him on the phone over here, which is why I did that and corroborated. But he's advised me that basically speaking, it's at night minchamarev and what's it called, and on Shabbos. Morning, the morning thing is, they have no problem limiting it to one minyan in the morning because that's not what their, what their function is over here. So the catering hall is for internal use only, they're not looking to rent it out.
Okay, any more specifics?
Mr. Langry, my notes indicate from last reading that there will only be warming dishes or warming facilities in the, in the basement, there won't be full, full-fledged ovens.
Is that correct, Mr. Willner? Yes, that is correct.
And the only catering per se would be for the synagogue people, it won't be rented out. Of the synagogue.
That is correct. That is, that is why I have Mr. Willner on the phone.
Jerry, that was the answer I was looking for. No actual kitchen, just warming facilities.
No actual kitchen, just warming facilities, correct.
Okay, one more question, second floor. What are you doing on the second floor? Obviously, the main floor is the synagogue. What are you doing on the second floor? Is it a balcony looking down to the first floor?
You're not going up there.
I hear you, Obi. Is it a balcony going down to the? Is it a balcony looking down to the, to the main synagogue? Or is it completely closed and it can be used as classrooms with another 2,000 square feet?
Bency, can you answer that? Mr. Willner, could, Mr. Mr. Langry, could you do me a favor? Mr. Willner was not able to hear you speak through my telephone. Could you ask, let me see if I can make it louder on the speaker. I put it on speakerphone, could you, could you now?
I will repeat your question. The second floor synagogue. Second floor of the synagogue. Is it a conventional ladies' section with a balcony looking down the main sanctuary? Or is it completely closed? Is it a completely closed sanctuary?
He says, he says, what he said to me, it's a balcony looking down.
Balcony looking down, very good.
That's what he's advised me, he, he can't hear you clearly. Bency, can you go back to, is there anyone?
I, I, we didn't swear him in, Abe, so you, you just tell me what he said.
What, Bency, is, what you're saying is, it's a balcony looking down? Yes.
And the plan says open to below.
Open to below, thank you very much, Brian, that's all I need, thank you very much.
Yes.
So on that, on that second floor, on that second floor, that'll be an additional to the ladies' section, ladies' gallery.
Say, ask the question again, Mr. Halberstam?
Second floor. Hold on a second, two seconds. Left side, it is a ladies' section.
I don't see. Abe, Abe Halberstam, you have architecturals?
Yes. Page Z2.
I don't have architecturals, I'm sorry.
Okay. So on the second floor. Moish, Moish.
Yes.
Right over here?
Yes.
This is the ladies' section, which is to the left side of the shul.
On the, the second floor is a library, it is not a ladies' section.
Abe, do you mind holding that picture up again?
This is right over here.
To below?
So right over here, open window. And this is, it says over here, Esasnashim, ladies' section.
How many square feet?
What? And then I'm going to open up further.
Second floor.
See the balcony that you discussed before. Hold on a minute.
I see, Obi.
Right over there on the bottom is your open space.
Oh.
So it's open to below. And this right there is your, is your Esasnashim right over here. So you've got one space right over here and then you have one open right over here.
So how many square feet do we have on the second floor?
So according to this, we have an Esasnashim of, a ladies' section of 734, balcony of 569, and a mechanical storage room of 353. So that'll be about 1,000, about, about 1,600 square feet.
About 20, so open below about 25%, okay, thank you very much. Abe Penza.
Yes.
Do you mind shutting the phone, it's giving a lot of back, back.
I shut it off, I apologize, but I was trying to get answers to your question.
I understand.
Okay. Are you done, Moish?
I'm done, thank you for, for listening.
You got it. Anyone else from the board members?
Mr. Flannery, this is Jerry Dastie, and I want to confirm that there's an issue at least of wetlands in the northern part. And any condition of approval would be on a satisfactory LOI. If there, if it does show any wetlands, you'll have to go back to the board because it's going to change the size of the, of the improvements.
Well, Terry, Terry's report didn't indicate the, the wetlands issue and asked for professional testimony on it. It's my testimony because I've been, been involved in this site before, there is not any wetlands. We had a report from Du Bois Environmental indicating there was no wetlands. And we would expect a condition that says the applicant should address that through professional input to the satisfaction of the board engineer, which I'm very confident we can do. It's a wetlands issue that all the adjoining development had this similar misrepresented aerials indicating there was wetlands.
Well, the reason I bring that up to you, you indicated earlier in response to the chairman's question that you would comply with Mr. Vogt's letter, page 11 of his letter, it says, "We could, obtaining an LOI presence/absence determination shall be a condition of any board approval."
And if you recall, I indicated I could go through the items individually. I, I did want to, when we were finished with the other items that were of importance to the board, indicate and, and provide that professional testimony. It starts on, on page 10 and it indicates, "We recommend the applicant's consultant provide supporting testimony at the time of the public hearing." So my testimony is that I am familiar with this site. I have worked on this particular piece of property before as well as the adjoining pieces of property. And there was an indication on, on one of the databases for the state that there was a wetland corridor that went through here. If you look on the aerial that we had, there was a house which would be in that wetland if it was actually there. And my office did that application for the house, at which time we successfully addressed the issue. And we would like to successfully address it the same way without going to the DEP, unless as part of resolution compliance, the township engineer says that they're not convinced with the information we give.
Mr. Vogt, does that sound, what's your opinion on that?
Well, yeah, the, the recommendation for the presence/absence was actually from Mr. Du Bois's report. There was a report originally submitted with the application. And I think this was the original application approximately a, a year back. And that was a recommendation of the author of the report and we simply indicated that we agreed with that recommendation.
Again, that's, that's a recommendation that a lot of environmental scientists put in their initial reports because it's easier to say, just go to the DEP. If the author of that report doesn't provide an updated report that indicates that it's his professional opinion, it's not necessary, then we understand we would have to go. We'd like to handle this the way matters of this nature are handled in Lakewood on a regular basis. And it would be subject to RVE's concurrents. So if Du Bois Environmental doesn't do more work and come back and definitively show that it's not wetlands, which I am very confident they, they can and they will, then, then we would go get the presence/absence letter.
Okay. Abe?
Yes.
And Brian, you still didn't answer my question about the stairs in the front yard setback on, on Pine Street and?
We, we will, we will move the stairs to a different location. So it's not on Pine Street. As far as getting more setback, I, I don't know how we keep it that it has the area to accommodate the congregation, that's an existing congregation, without something else giving that, I, I would respectfully request the 15-foot front setback.
Right, I think the other thing was. Right. I think the other thing was that Mr. Halberstam was asking for, can we put some more greenery in on the driveways? I think we could do that, can't we?
We would accept as a condition of approval. And you look at those duplexes, you can see that the duplex in the R75 could slide back a little further and not require any buffer relief. Uh, and, and that could accommodate driveways that would do as Mr. Halberstam requested. And, and we could make that a, a condition of compliance that the applicant provide plot plans that show adequate parking. And if the size of the duplexes have to shrink, uh, a, a small amount to accommodate that, the applicant would do that.
Brian, you got me wrong. It's not the size of the house, because the house is fine with the greenery around the house. It's the front yards that there's absolutely not.
The reason, the reason there's no greenery is because it's, uh, three parking spaces all the way across and stacked and, and parking behind that. So if we had two double-stack parking, uh, and, and it only would require uh, another maybe seven feet, uh, that could leave two, uh, an 18-foot wide driveway rather than a 27-foot wide driveway. And that would accommodate what you would be looking for.
Let me ask you a question. If you were to put double-stack, one on the left and one on the right side of each property, and leave the center all open.
Yes, we could do that.
You, you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, 100%. And, and if the board acts favorably, we would agree to do that.
I, I'm not sure what that means. Chairman, could you say it again so I can make sure the resolution is correct?
Let's take a look, let's take a look at, at, at lot, at lot, lot 1306. At 1306, on the left side where it'll be a double-stack driveway, one and two, and then on, on the left side and on the right side will be a double-stack driveway, three and four. And the center will remain open, some greenery or some stuff like that.
Um, I'll be honest with you, Abe, I think we're better off doing the two driveways together. Because then you have greenery on both sides and, and greenery of the other, uh, houses on both sides.
But in the center, in the middle, in the center.
Yeah, that we're doing smaller scripts all around instead of larger connected scripts.
So what you're saying is to put it in the center of the lot, not, not all the way to the right and not all the way to the left, just in the center of the lot.
Yeah. The main thing is to get greenery. Let's put the driveways together.
My recommendation would, would be that the double-stack parking is always to the north. So that, because that allows for the angle of the roadway to, to take into account. So on lot 13.
No, you'll push, you'll, you'll push the house back.
But we could accomplish what you're looking for on 13.06. We would have double-loaded parking up toward the outside wall. And 13.05, it would be toward the center. And that would provide the, the spaces, uh, with the least impact to the unit.
And then 1303 and 04, you can definitely push back without any issues and do a center, a center driveways.
I, I thought I heard somebody saying, oh, oh. Yeah, if, if you want them center driveways, we'll do center driveways.
Through, through the chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, chairman, I think I agree with, uh, Mr. Langkry. Um, if you give them a little bit of greenery, what's gonna happen eventually is that greenery, because that's a busy area anyway, it's probably gonna turn into an, uh, tires going right on the greenery itself. If you have the wider greenery between, so then at least they'll have greenery that'll be maintained, and it'll make the place look nicer. If you put it too thin, I think that they're just gonna drive all over it.
So are you, are you, are you in, are you saying that you want the, the double-stack driveways left and right side or the center?
The, the way they have it presently now, I would think is the.
You want it all blacktop, the whole tire, the whole tire?
Blacktop with the center being greenery.
What do you say center? What do you mean center? In between the lot?
Between the two houses.
No, when I said center, no, 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 that's not what I was referring to.
That's what I was referring to.
You were, you were referring for purposes. I was, I was referring to in front of every door, in front of every house, center in front of every house, to have a, um, in the front of it, a double-stack driveway. A, a double, double-stack driveway right in front of the house. So therefore, the right side of the lot and the left side of the lot stays open and green.
And they're gonna make it into a parking lot, Abe.
So I'm gonna.
They're gonna park right over there. It's not gonna be big.
So what you're saying is you want to sense.
Now, you're gonna have dirt, cars parking on top of dirt. I'd rather have the, the driveway because if anything, the kids can play on the driveway. You know what I'm saying? Either way, they, they're gonna find some area to play there. If you turn around and make it into a greenery, they're gonna make it into a parking lot anyway because it's not white enough.
You're gonna have a big parking lot of eight cars with the property line right in the middle.
Have, have a little bit of greenery between the houses.
Excuse me?
A little bit of greenery between the houses, just in between somewhere.
But there's no space.
There's no space.
And that area, there's no space, guys.
That's what, that's what he's saying. So you want, you want four, two double.
Listen, the main thing is to double-stack.
Light by the center, meaning the property line will be right between the park, the parking lot.
Right.
Right?
The way I was doing the diagram.
Gentlemen, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Uh, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Once again, once again, I think this is, yeah, I don't know. Once again, I think this is the better resolve to the engineers in the field, so to speak. I can put into the resolution that we want the, our engineer to look to see if there's an opportunity for more greenery, making certain that the, that the safety is paramount. I, I, other than that, I don't know how we can design it.
This, this way looks disgusting with one big parking with one big blacktop all across.
Yeah, let's double-stack.
Somebody else was talking. I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I know. I was gonna say, this way, I, I'm totally not in a favor of the way it was presented because it's one big, one big blacktop from the beginning to the end. Go ahead, Maysh.
Uh, yes, I agree with that.
Who has some people speaking in the background?
I think it's Maysh.
Morgenley, I'm on the phone here. Could you give me a second? Sorry, guys. Um, I think the main thing is it should be double-stacked. Um, the three across is, is rough. And like Jerry said, let the engineers, uh, you know, figure it out to amplify the greenery. Uh, and the main thing is that we should be safety, double-stacked, and that's that.
I don't wanna look like I was too longed in. Um, Abraham, you wanted to say something before?
No, I like the greenery. I, I just wanted to say that you should open to the public or get the things already moving. We don't, we don't, you don't like.
Franny, did, I forgot to ask you to announce the email address before. My apologies, Franny.
You.
Franny?
Good morning, Fran.
Franny?
Fran, can you hear us? Fran?
Good morning.
Yo, ma'am.
Uh-uh. I'm in trouble. Fran?
You can't yell.
You can't hear us.
I'm gonna call her right now.
It's frozen. She's not. I'm calling her. It's frozen. She's not moving even.
Yep, you're right. Oh, there she is. Her hair's moving.
She fell asleep.
Fran.
You're probably right.
She's looking right at me.
Fran, can you hear us? You're on, you're on mute.
I can't hear you. You're on mute, Franny. I'm, I read lips. She ain't, it ain't, it ain't pretty what she's saying. Hello, ma'am.
Franny, talk loud.
Oh, finally.
Hey, I know I'm on the phone here.
Oh, there you are. We need you. We need you, please, okay? Can you hear us? Yes. Man, it's time to do roll call again. It's time to wake up. I can hear you, Franny. Fran? Fran, can I hear you? Can you hear me? Fran?
Scum food.
Fran, you're back on mute.
Can only hear.
Oh. Hold on a minute. Yeah, you're on mute. On mute. I see you're on mute. I see your mute button on.
Can't hear you.
Now you're off mute.
No comprendo.
Let me, let me check the speaker. Let me see. Can you hear me, Franny? No, I don't, I don't hear you. I don't hear you through the, through the computer.
No comprendo.
We don't hear you, Franny. We don't hear you. There's some symbol here by your speakerphone. What does that mean? There's something going on over there. You're back on mute.
Yes, she is. I see the green light.
Right. You put yourself back on mute, Franny.
Okay, one second. He's on here, so I can't do anything now. Jason is on here.
Oh, so Jason is the, is giving us an issue. Okay.
Do we have to start the application again?
No.
First, take off the mute from your, from your phone, from your computer.
She's on the phone, not on the computer. Talk on the phone.
What?
Let her talk on the phone. We can hear her.
Can you hear her through the phone, through my phone?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so take off the mute from, unmute yourself from the computer just in case you pop back on, okay?
I am on unmute, but I'm in the computer now to try to fix it. One minute.
Okay.
Let me see.
I tried to see some. We just voted six duplexes, four synagogues, and a Walmart.
Five schools.
Oh, my gosh.
Tell the public to send you some emails, Fran. Just to mention what's.
All I needed, but Fran, 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 can you please announce the email address?
Zoning, oh, God. zoningcomments@lakewoodnj.gov.
Zone, zoning board comments at lakewoodnj.com?
Gov.
Zoning board comments at lakewoodnj.gov. If anyone has any comments, please send it in. Thank you. Anyone, anyone on the board have anything to say about this?
I think if the steps on the front of Pine Street, like you suggested, Abe, on the side, I think it's a bigger, a bigger improvement to how this was months and months and months ago. And I think that, um, it's come a long way, as you said.
Yes. It's come, it's come, it's come a very long way. Anyone else?
I agree.
Brian, are you, you can't put the steps on the side?
Yes, we, we agree we'll move the steps to the side.
To the side? You mean to the rear?
Yes, that would be the rear.
That'll be the rear. It will not be facing on, on Pine Street.
It'll be faced, it'll be the other side of Dr. Martin Luther King.
Right.
Okay.
Near the single-family house?
Yes, single-family house.
I didn't see that. Abram, what did you bring up? What did you show up? I didn't hear you. I'm mute.
You're mute.
Nothing, everything's fine.
Okay, fine. Okay. Anyone else?
Comments? Ready for a motion?
Okay. Franny, anything came in?
Mr. Chairman, forgive me. You have to ask, you opened it to the public. It was never opened to the public.
Well, that, that's what I announced that email address. That should be open to the public.
Okay, well, Abe, I have to hang up on you so I can check. Hold on.
Oh, you got him. Okay.
What time is it, Maru?
What time is the chunt ready, Fran? Lakewood, uh, back it up, Fran, um, Abram, back it up. Zoning board.
Chairman, chairman, the, at last meeting.
NJ.gov.
There we go.
At last meeting, there were eighteen.
Franny, I don't hear you. Go ahead, Jerry.
At eighteen, last meeting, there were eighteen emails in favor of the application and one against it. So that's where we were last month. I don't know if Franny has any new emails or not.
Okay. Well, we're just gonna forward.
Chairman, I'll go over what I believe to be the conditions in the event that there's a favorable approval. I have a couple of questions myself that might, somebody has to correct me on, but when you're ready, I'll be ready.
Okay, good.
Okay, I just sent you the email.
You sent me the email. You sent it to Jerry. Who'd you send the email to?
Both you and Jerry.
Okay. Jerry, take a look at your screen.
They listen, Warren, Warren.
I have one here from a, Rachel Willner, W-I-L-L-E, uh, N-E-R. She and, uh, Mr. Willner live at 395 Warren Avenue. I believe there is a need for a new shul in the neighborhood. I also think new houses in the area would help. Thank you very much for considering my feedback. And that was said tonight about, uh, 7:50.
Is that the only one there, Jerry?
It's all I got. Fran? Any others, Fran?
Anything new, Fran, Fran?
The other ones are all from the last meeting.
All right.
Okay, fine. So, so we'll move, we'll move forward. Next one. Um.
Chairman, can I indicate to you what my notes reveal? Are the conditions of the approval? And I have a couple of questions myself that maybe I need to be corrected about.
Go ahead.
Okay. This property is in, uh, it's a bisected property. It's about 1.2 acres. It's both in the R7.5 and the R10 zone, so it's a split-zone application. There's been uncontrovered expert testimony from Mr. Flannery that this application is a beneficial use. It's in compliance with the goals of the Township Master Plan and the Vision Statement, which calls for smart growth principles. It also meets the goals, uh, of the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It's proposed as a shul, as modified, is a shul, two duplex lots, four units, and one single house, a single-family house on Pine Street, which would be about 100 feet from the corner of Pine and Martin Luther King Boulevard. There's been three documents as, as, as evidence. A1 was a tax map. A2 is the plan or the survey dated, uh, 1/20. A3 is the Google aerial map. Um, the testimony is that there will not be outside catering. There will only be a warming trays or warming kitchen in the basement. It will be improved with curbs and sidewalks along both sides of the property. Um, they will provide street trees as much as practicable, but I'll get to that in just a moment. Um, there are numerous variances, both C and D variances, which are set forth in pages four and five of, uh, Terry Vogt's, uh, report. Mr. Flannery has testified this is a uniquely shaped lot, but the application is to service the neighborhood, which exists that now has a, a, a overworked shul across the street. The applicant will provide a fence along the property line in terms of a design waiver for landscaping. Uh, they will address the number of trees that can be planted at the time of, uh, resolution compliance or as the construction is being undertaken, when they can see what the site looks like pursuant to the reasonable, uh, recommendation of our engineer. They need a design waiver from, from complying with the strict requirements in terms of how many street trees and how many feet apart they have to be. Uh, the area, Mr. Flannery indicated, is not serviced by wetlands. Uh, there is no wetlands on the site. Uh, there is not a requirement that a, a letter of interpretation be obtained unless Mr. Vogt's, um, uh, firm finds a need for an LOI. At that point, the applicant would agree to find it. Um, now, between the two duplex properties, the board wants more landscaping, but the amount of landscaping and whether it can be placed there without any kind of a safety issue would be determined, determined at time of resolution compliance and site inspections to the reasonable satisfaction of our engineer. Uh, there will be a chain-link fence near the driveway entrances for safety purposes. It might be lower, it might be lower than the four feet, which is now required, at which the planning board would allow.
Don't turn off your phone. You need to hear the meeting.
There might be.
They're trying to fix it. They aren't there with it.
There would be signage and stop signs at the driveway entrances for safety purposes as determined by the township engineer. The applicant will request and copy both Mr. Vogt and I of the township committee that the township committee agreed there should be no on-street parking along the property line.
I can hear them perfectly. Can you hear me, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, they fixed it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Now, may I continue, Fran? Okay.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry.
That's all right, there's no outside catering, as I indicated previously. On the second floor of the synagogue, there will be a balcony looking down. The second floor will have a library, a ladies section, and a mechanical room. I believe they all total about 1,600 square feet. And as much as possible, the applicant will amplify the greenery so as to reduce the macadam on the site, which then will be resolved or for the reasonable recommendations of the township engineer at the time of resolution compliance. And other than that, they'll comply with all the details set forth in Mr. Vogt's letter of July 9. I did not hear whether or not the houses should have a standard frontage that we have of all other houses in terms of one-third being brickstone or brickstone or, you know, concrete, or, you know, so I don't know if that's a condition or not.
We don't have a problem if you want it, no problem.
Okay, I think Avram Afthali wanted to say something.
Just one quick question, eh, Brian? Did, did we maximize all the parking towards the back? It seems like you could fit another four spaces without touching anything, if there's no wetlands or anything, is that maximized, or you can still fit another four spaces there?
Where?
About the parking lot for the shul?
The parking lot for the shul, if you go towards the back, it seems like there's some grass there that is gonna be basically used at the end. If we can put in another four spaces, I don't think it's gonna hurt anything in the application, it can just help. If eventually it's gonna be a nice, very nice shul, people are gonna become.
Where, where do you see, Avram, where do you see, I, I don't see where you see extra space.
In the front, in the front page, I see the whole parking, the whole parking place. If you continue the parking, you would just continue it backwards.
Is it, no, you're, it's, it's the, you mean right there with the squares for the, for the garbage dumpster?
Yes, just continue to the back, a little bit more.
You can't, because that's, that's, you have about, you have about 10 feet to the property line.
10 feet, it looks like there's much more, there's only 10 feet, Brian?
The property line goes back there and the rear yard for the single family wraps around, as well as the rear yard for the duplex wraps around.
The house is, the house is backyard, I apologize, I thought it was still the other, okay.
No, 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 no.
Chairman, I, I missed one resolution issue. And I'm not sure that we have this, I have this correct, the stairs on the shul will not front on Pine Street.
Correct.
And they'll front on either the rear or the other side of the shul.
Correct.
There was also some testimony about going back 20 feet rather than the 15 feet, but I think we kept it at 15 feet.
But, but, Brian said he can't do it, and, and he thinks I'm just gonna melt, he say, all right.
I thought you would see the wisdom and my testimony would be compelling.
Indeed it is.
The wisdom is compelling, I still think you should push, make the shul a little smaller and give a little bit more side yard on Pine Street at the corner. It's not in the middle of the block, you know, if you can just, 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 couple of, two, three feet, move it in.
The, the applicant is certainly willing to. The people will be closer together now that you've said two feet. We can make it 17 rather than 15.
Okay, what's, by the way, what's on, what's on the side of the shul right over here? There's squiggly signs in the opposite, opposite Pine Street, what is that?
Uh, that's, that is a retaining wall and a grade change, the squiggly lines are contours.
Okay, and can you, can you, and how many feet do you have, how many feet is that whole area? From the front to the back?
Yeah, we, we need that whole area to make the transition between the parking lot and, and the shul.
You can't push, you can't push the building into that area two feet? And therefore you'll not, don't change the line of the building, just push it into that area so you'll have a greater front yard on Pine Street.
My professional opinion is that area is already as tight as, as you should make.
Correct.
Yeah, that's true. As tight as it can be, that should be grounds for denial, because it's too tight. How are you gonna give me two extra feet on Pine Street?
The only way to give you two extra feet is making the building two feet less. That's, you can see there's steps going down there, it's a ramp area and with a retaining wall in the middle, so.
That's, in the middle, that's the retaining wall, you can't put the retaining wall closer to the parking lot line?
Well, the, you can see it's a ramp that goes up, turns around, and comes into the building. The, the handicap people, you know, if this was before the ADA days, we could have just made them go up steps, but years ago before ADA came in, I, I didn't have any sympathy for older people, but now that I am one, it's very important that you have those kind of ramps so that.
No, I understand that, but you can't push that into that, into that extra space? So that.
Extra space, there, you can see there's a retaining wall in the middle and a retaining wall along the parking lot.
Let me ask you another question, which you're totally, which was totally missed, ah, totally. Where's my AC units gonna be around here?
Uh, the AC units will be on the roof, and, and they'll be shielded.
Roof.
Yeah, that was the conditions, in my notes, I didn't mention that before, Chairman, sorry.
Okay.
Can I make a comment on the, on the roofs on the AC units? I've been told by, by construction officials that it's not a good idea.
Right.
Where are you gonna put it?
Outside.
Why not? It blows straight into the shul.
They said from a, a technical, that's one of those things, from a technical aspect, they don't, they don't like it.
Well, that's a good suggestion, Mr. Langley, but it's allowed, you know, by the building code, so it may not be as efficient, maybe that's what they're telling you.
Yeah, they.
You can't put it, you can't put it on James, on Pine Street. Put it over there, because we were just told that you have the retaining wall there, so you can't put it on that side, by the parking lot side, so now you're just one right in the back, by the orange, red, and white bump path, and by the other set of ADA, the other ADA handicapped ramp over there.
Let, let the, let the professionals figure out where they're gonna put it.
Abe, one second, I have plenty of commercial buildings on the all.
Leave it on the roof.
I think the phrase, gentlemen, is roof mounted with parapet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, those kinds. I thought we meant for the housing.
No, no, no.
No, the housing, the housing, they would all be in the rear yard.
Right.
Or.
Moish, they're gonna come back and they're gonna say we outfitted the Pine Shul with the side, with the, with the air conditioning on the side, we made a mistake, please leave, give us a, a permission to leave on the side. But it's gonna come back like that, but meanwhile, let's just say it's on the roof.
Okay.
Happy with the, Mr. Langley will take it on the roof.
No problem.
Is for the synagogue AC to be on the roof.
Okay.
Yeah, commercial space, it has to be.
Just to be clear.
I got it.
Yeah, I was gonna leave it in Terry Vogt's hand, let it, let Terry figure out where it goes.
Abe and Brian.
Terry's in trouble.
Don't come back to me later to say that you made a mistake by outfitting the ductwork, that it has to be on the side.
My client asked me to ask this question, can we put it behind the shul between the single and the shul?
No, because you didn't have that much backyard space over there, that's why, that's why I didn't want it.
Okay, thank you.
Now that you're asking to put it on the ground, put it on the roof.
I got it.
Okay. Okay, so you.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Two feet, we're not gonna do two feet?
We don't got the room, Mr. Chairman.
We don't got the two feet?
We would have to make the building smaller.
Chairman, the steps moved to the rear.
The steps are in the rear, correct. Okay. Franny, no other emails came in, right? Nope. Okay, so let's go for a, a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with all of Jerry's stipulations.
I'll second.
Whoa, 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 what's my stipulations? Only Jerry?
You make the motion then.
Okay, I have a motion from, I have a motion from Moish Langley, can I have a second? Mayor Gelli's second, Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Halverson is not here, Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Enough Tally?
Yes.
Javibias?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halvistam?
Yes, we'll do, air conditioning's on the roof.
Thank you very much for your presentation, I'm there for sure, God bless you all.
Take care, have a good night.
Well, we get five minutes, I was having watched Mr. Gonzalez eat an ice cream. Take a break for five minutes.
Yes.
Somebody reach out to Moish Ingber so that he's.
I'll call him, I'll call him to get him on, I'll be right back.
Hello, Jerry.
I love you, I love you.
I didn't wait.
Oh, god. Franny, you're trying yourself? I see a hubby sneaking in the back.
No, he's not.
Oh, I, he just sneaked, stuck up.
What do you want?
I, I got him in trouble.
Yes, you did.
You gotta love him.
I have no choice. Where'd everybody go?
My back.
Okay, I'm muted?
Yes.
I'll just, okay.
No, not taking five minutes, great.
Five more.
I know, they tried.
Brian, can you hear me? Brian, can you hear me?
Yes.
I sent you an, an email during the last hearing, could you maybe email me tomorrow about the greenery issues, I have it written, thanks.
Will do, thanks.
Hey, Joey, you there?
Jerry?
Anybody? Anybody on?
I'm here, yes.
Jerry, what's next application?
The application is fifty-eight Drake LLC. It's a bifurcated application seeking only at this point the use approval construct on twenty-three single-family homes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Jerry. This is Adam Pfeffer. Did anybody reach out to the seventh member?
We got him. I'm sorry.
To anyone for a seventh member to be on. I think there are only six people at the moment.
I'm calling.
Okay, thank you.
I thought Mr. Uber was coming. Frank, can you hear us? Fancy.
Yes, I'm here. Judah.
Yeah.
Turning the pages.
Hi, you want to log on? Thank you.
Fran, the question was, do we have seven people, seven members? I thought we did now with Mr. Ingber coming on.
Well, Halverson is the only one off.
No, I'm on. Or Haverson.
I meant Halverson.
Yeah, okay, so we have, yes, we do have eight members.
Four, five, six, with Moshe Ingber, seven. We have seven members with Moshe Ingber.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I reached out to Moshe Ingber. He's logging on. Sorry, it was a pocket call. It was a pocket call. No, no, no. Waiting for you to log on. Okay, bye. Where's Mr. Ingber? Hello? Where is he?
Who are you looking for?
I'm looking for Moshe Ingber.
You want more application? That's it. We're done?
Yeah. Oh, there he is. I see you on. You just logged on?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Anybody want some?
Okay, I got it. No problem. Okay. Okay, Franny, I hope you enjoying your dinner.
Here's something for me.
I'm eating ice cream.
Ah, ice cream. Okay. Okay, Adam Pfeffer, ready to go. Um, um, Franny, please announce the application.
Appeal number four-one-five-three-fifty-eight Drake LLC, lot two-fifty-one-point-oh-two, lots eighteen, ninety-one, ninety-three, and one-oh-one in the R forty zone, West Core Street, use variance for ten twenty-three single-family homes. This is from Terry Vogt dated June second. The applicant requests bifurcated use variance relieved to necessary to construct to twenty-three single-family homes within the R forty single-family residential zone. The depicted density request is in general conformance to R twelve zoning standards.
Okay, Adam?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, on behalf of the applicant. As Fran indicated, this is a bifurcated application for use variance. The board is seeing similar applications in this area. We are coming into, coming in for experience for up to twenty-three, but you're not setting any numbers. Should the board approve this application, you will have a second bite of the apple to take a look at all the designs and features of this application. I have Brian Flannery here to address any technical items. If we can, Mr. Dasty, if you can swear, Mr. Flannery at this time?
Sure. Mr. Flannery, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? So it'll be God.
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. The application is indicated is for a bifurcated application for this seven-point-eight acres. I have sheet seventy-five of the tax map, and I've highlighted the lots in block two-fifty-one-point-oh-two, the block that this application is in. And in that block, there's
Can I ask you to get that easel closer to your camera?
Certainly.
Tilt it up.
Good?
Tilt it up more.
Tilt it up more.
Got it. Okay. Yep, good.
Okay, so we're talking about the four lots at the southwesterly portion of this block. Uh, this block, block two-fifty-one-point-oh-two, has twenty-seven lots in it. I'm very familiar with this area because I lived in the adjoining block two-fifty-one-point-oh-three. And back in nineteen ninety-nine, when the first master plan came up, I suggested to my neighbors that the A-one zone that it was in did not make sense for Lakewood, and that if it stayed as an A-one zone, the development that would occur in this area is schools. Uh, they realized I was right uh, years later, but but by that point, the character of the neighborhood had changed. You can see of a lot of the lots, the majority of them are two-acre lots. Uh, the the breakdown in this particular block is that of the twenty-seven lots that are there, uh, fourteen of them have been approved for R twelve-type developments. Five of them are schools. Uh, four of the lots are in this application. One of the lots is vacant. So there's three single-family detached lots in this block. The property is in the R forty, but it's certainly not an R forty. The master plan of two thousand and seventeen realizes that R twelve is the appropriate use for this uh, block, uh, and they indicated that subject to roadway improvements. And what we're requesting is similar to the past uh, decisions of the board that since by the current zoning, we'd only be allowed eight lots. That if the board acts favorably on this, we will come back with a subdivision application, understanding that we only get to develop eight lots, no building permits, or any beyond the eight lots until the construction on Cross Street by the county has commenced. Um, looking at the density, um, if under the R forty zone, we're allowed one-point-oh-nine dwelling units per acre, uh, which would which be eight dwelling units. Under the R twelve, we would be permitted three-point-six-three dwelling units per acre, which would yield twenty-eight dwelling units. The sketch we've shown and which we're indicating if the board acts favorably, it would be, uh, the reduced, uh, lot sizes with a maximum of twenty-three dwelling units, which comes to a density of two-point-nine-five dwelling units per acre. Um, the sketch that we did, well, we, the FWH did put together a uh, a aerial rendering, uh, and you can see on the aerial rendering the school to the north of us, uh, which is existing in that block. There's a school across the street. Rabbi Kenerek's, uh, school on the other side of Neiman, and this area, because it was A-one, changed to R forty, uh, which wasn't really compatible with the development patterns in the area. There's a lot of schools in the area. Um, the actual layout that we've done, and this isn't something that's set in stone, if the board acts favorably on on the bifurcated application, we would come back with fully designed detailed plans uh, that the board could, uh, provide input, and we would meet all of the engineering criteria and ordinance criteria with respect to the R R twelve zoning criteria. Uh, with respect to the justification for the relief requested, the master plan of two thousand and seventeen on page three, background information, it gives you the population growth that that we've all heard, and you've probably heard me say too many times, but the conclusion is based on this information is therefore important that Lakewood planned for residential development to house its growing population, and this would do that. This project would necessitate the extension of the public sewer and public water to the area, and the public sewer would be extended from Drake Road up to this area, which would benefit uh, the area and other properties as well as this particular property. The master plan of two thousand and seventeen on page seven, under division statement, says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. I, as seen when I showed you the, uh, the aerial, there's four houses in this area for Lakewood's current development pattern. It's certainly in need of redevelopment. Um, the municipal land use law, NGA C forty-colon-fifty-five-D two, under the purposes of the act, is A, encouraging municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in a state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and it's my testimony that that this does this. The same section under E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and preservation of the environment. And it's my testimony that based on the two thousand and seven master plan designating that R twelve is the appropriate, once the roads can support it, that this is the appropriate application. It's a, a D variance for special reasons. Uh, it's my opinion that this property is uniquely situated when you look at the block uh, where a majority of it is, um, R twelve type development, where there are schools interspersed, that this development may be appropriate use. As far as the positive and negative criteria, uh, it's my opinion that the board can grant this variance without any detriment to the public good and without any detriment to zone plan and zoning ordinance. It's consistent with the the master plan, uh, and it'll have no adverse impact on the surrounding properties, assuming that Cross Street is uh, improved, and we were certainly, uh, presenting this application with the understanding that any approval would limit the amount of units that could be built prior to Cross Street, uh, construction, starting to the number that we're entitled to, uh, without the density variance.
Brian, what's, what are the two streets that this intersects?
The property has frontage on West Cross and Neiman Road.
Oh, this is, which one is Neiman?
Uh, Neiman on the variance map is the one that runs from the bottom to the top on the right-hand side of
But over here, which is Neiman? Show me Neiman on this. Show me Neiman on them, on your, on your, on your, uh, that's
Neiman is this way.
Got it. And this is West Cross. The Drake is on the other side of that line.
Right, the, the, what we envision is a cul-de-sac coming out off of West Cross to provide the frontages for the lots so that none of the units have to front onto West Cross, and then, uh, units confronting on Neiman Road.
Now, I know we've approved a number of other projects similar to this in that neighborhood. Is that, any of them are budding this or joining up with this one?
Uh, if we look at the original map that I put up, uh, none of them are but it. We have two schools that separate us from the major areas where they were approved.
That's the one that we approved up there in the back, um, which goes from Drake all the way to Cross for, for the right, right?
Yes, yes, the, the, the two ninety and ninety-eight, which are above the school uh, in the same block, there's a connector that comes, uh, connecting Drake to, to West Cross.
Right, right. Those are, that was that, that, um, a triple cul-de-sac, um, of development that we did over there.
And just coincidentally, lot ninety was the one that the, uh, extension was granted.
Okay. And what's in the corner over there on the corner? I can't, I pointed to you. The other, further, further up at the, at the corner of the sheet. All the way up, other side.
All the way up?
Yeah. What is that? Yes.
That's White Street. That was at the board, uh, I believe, two meetings ago, where it had come in originally. Yes.
Okay, and that one, and the one next to it, the triangle?
The triangle is also has frontage on White Street, and that was approved last year.
Okay. Okay, so we do this, okay.
Sorry, Mr.
What?
I just want to confirm, uh, Terry's review letter had a few, uh, review comments. I think you addressed, addressed most of them. The other comments, I believe, all will be addressed should this, should this application be approved. Can you just take a quick look at, at the review comments, one through six, and, and indicate to the board that we can comply? Yes, yes, and certainly with respect to the, and, and all of these would, detailed information will be provided, but the dwellings would be typical Lakewood dwellings, uh, and all of the roads will be designed per RSIS. We, we know we need county approval, uh, and stormwater would be provided for a major development, and trash pickup would be DPW.
Thank you. Will there be curbs and sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, so basically what we're doing over here is exactly what we've done in the past, that we're only going to give you a building permit for whatever is permissible now under the R forty, um, we, which you indicated is eight.
Correct.
And, and we will not give you any other building permits until, um, Cross Street redevelopment commences the way the, the, um, master plan of two thousand and seventeen depicts that it should develop.
Yes. And, and this application will need to be designed and come back to the board, so we have, you know, some more
Chairman, still a bit of a site plan approval, subdivision approval. So there's a ways to go.
As Mr. Dasty indicated, we would agree to that, but it's really on the next application, should the board approve it, as there's no design here yet. Um, but we don't have any objection to it.
There are ways to go here.
Correct.
Yeah, by the way, any, Brian, any update on, on, on Cross Street? I know it was supposed to be done about a year ago.
The county engineer's office indicated that due to COVID, it, it got delayed. They're expecting it to start, uh, in the fall of this year.
Okay.
Can I have a question for Brian, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Little chair?
Yes, go ahead.
The houses on the corner of, of West Cross Street and White, what, what the zones are they? What, what are their?
They're all R forties now.
No, it shows R fifteen, Abe. That's why on the plans that I have.
West Cross Street and White, those are fifteen thousand square foot lots. That's the application that we were back a couple of months ago, where the board approved a cul-de-sac coming in with twelve thousand square foot lots.
Oh, okay, that's one that I said no. All right.
Remember, Bro, um, um,
That's one that I said no.
Obi, Obi. Those lots are approved only on condition once Cross Street gets, uh, fixed.
Right.
It started to be fixed.
I know, Abe, but I would prefer to see R fifteen, as you know, in that area. I think the houses are much nicer.
Well, you have a chance
To see, uh, an entrance and exit only on West Cross Street, but also on Neiman. So that way it could give the homeowners there ability to go in and out and not two cul-de-sacs, and everybody's going out to, you know, Cross Street, and then nobody's going out to Neiman, only the front, the people there, then they're stuck again. We're back to square one.
Obi.
That's one of the problems we have.
If the board acts favorably on this application, we will certainly investigate that. Uh, at, when we're doing subdivision design plans, uh, to incorporate a, uh, an access to Neiman Road.
Obi, can I interject here for a moment?
Sure.
Giving us a site plan. On site plan approval, we can then go ahead and comment on those, on these issues. Because I thought about the exact same thing when I saw only one entrance and two cul-de-sacs. I was thinking, why don't you just pop it open into Neiman? And that's why I asked before, where is Neiman Street? And, and take out that one lot and put a road right in there, and you can pop, um, go in from Cross and out on Neiman. But I decided not to mention anything on this over here. We'll mention it on site plan when it comes up.
Well, Chairman, if you would, just a moment. Chairman, if you would. Um, I Chairman, if you would, I think you ought to make some indication of that now before he does a formal site subdivision map. If that's the feeling of the board, you know, he would know that now, and he would have to plan accordingly and prepare the map accordingly.
Okay. We heard the comments, and we will take that into consideration when we're designing, uh...
Basically, would you like to see another exit and entrance?
I noticed.
So, much like we wanted to say something, much?
On, I wanted to say a few things, but on that Neiman Road, I think you might have a hazard by doing that, because you might create a shortcut to West Cross Street by doing that. Instead of people waiting by the light, they might cut across the, this, this, uh... this property and, and try to scoot across that way.
But there's no light there.
Where's the light?
There, there's...
There's no light on Neiman and Cross.
There's, there's no light there, but there, there might be backup on that.
There's gonna be backup, terrible backup on, 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 on Quest Cross as well.
Yeah, there's buses there, so I, I would caution that. If the board acts favorably, we'll consult with the traffic engineer, we'll do counts, and we'll get an idea of what makes the most sense. We'll review it with the, the board's engineer, so that we come back with a design that, uh...
Much, another entrance to Neiman, if you do another engine Neiman, you can go left and right either to Cross or down to Drake, and back out onto, onto, onto Central Avenue.
Right, and my, and my delivery guys, and my delivery guys at the pizza shop will know that's, uh... that what's it called?
Your guy.
So you, you, whoa, 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 one minute. So your delivery guy at the pizza shop can get back quicker to pick up another delivery?
True, too, I'm just saying.
Okay.
There'll be a benefit that people will get warmer pizza this way. That's an inherently beneficial use, okay.
By the way, the falafel won't fall apart, because they'll get there quicker.
I have another question. Are the numbers of the lots accurate, or that you're gonna get, that will be on site?
Up to, up to.
Up to. We're not giving any numbers, it's all up to.
Yes. I meant the numbers of the, the size of the lots. The sizes of the lots on, on this sketch have been calculated, and when we come back for subdivision approval, if the board acts favorably, the minimum lot size will be 12,000 square feet, and all the lots will comply with the R12 standard.
But you also heard that Obi wanted to see bigger lots, R15s over there.
And 20 houses, I think that's nice, too, 20 houses at R15.
Um, Chair, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm much familiar here. I have the same opinion as Obi. I really want to see R15 there. That area is already super congested. R15 is more, you know, a lot, a lot more appropriate there.
They're nicer houses, they have more space for the kids to play. Even the other, very congested, I'd suggest that's not...
Even the R, even the other applications that came through here, they were between R12 and R15, closer to R15. They weren't straight up R15, R12.
Correct. Okay.
I, I hear you. The, uh, the inherently beneficial use, they're bringing water and sewer, and it's already owned by some schools. These, these properties are already owned by some schools, so I'd rather see ratables than another school popping up.
The applicant understands that the board's comments, that, again, should the board vote favorably, it's only, as, as indicated, 23, we will take...
One minute, Brian, can you announce that email address again?
Sure, zoningboardcomments@lakewoodnj.gov.
Zoningboardcomments@lakewoodnj.gov. Anyone have anything to say, please send it in an email. Thank you, go ahead, I'm sorry to cutting off Adam.
No problem. I, I was just saying that we, we'll take all the board's comments into consideration of larger lots, or minimum, we understand that you're, you're pushing back for 12,000. The entrance on Neiman, as Brian indicated, we have no objection. We're gonna get some traffic studies. We will take a look at it, and we'll understand that if the board doesn't like the, the site plan, you have the right to deny that. So we're gonna do our best to make the applica, application and the lot sizes as best as possible.
Good.
Chairman, just, just a moment. Chairman, I think that this evening, you should, assuming you're going to favorably approve the use variance, I think this evening you should advise the applicant whether you want it to be R15 or R12, just simple, for the same type of reasons we talked about Neiman. You know, to access out the Neiman. They should know tonight if you're gonna allow more density, what the limit of that density would be.
Okay, so let me just see if we got any emails, and then I'll ask for final comments. And I guess, based on what you're saying, Jerry, we need a double motion on this?
No, no, if you, if you, the application is for up to 23 lots using the R12 standards. Assuming for the sake of the discussion, you want to approve, you know, of more density than the R40, indicate which zone you would agree to allow it to be used.
One minute, I hear too much noise. Mr. Pizza?
Yes.
At this time. What's the noise in the background?
What is that?
All right, we're better now. He was looking at the plans, I think.
Mr. Dasty, if, if I can just make one comment as to, as, in response to your comment, I would ask that, that if the board vote favorably, they still leave it at the request that we had for the R12? But we understand that we have to design these smart. So there may be some that are 13, maybe some that are 16, but we understand the board wants to see larger lots, but to say that they're automatically all R15, if we come in with one that's R14, we then have to ask for that, that use variance again. By doing it the way we've asked for, doing it as R12 with up to 23, we understand the board could tell us no, they don't like the, the design of it, and we understand that, and we're acknowledging that on the record. Brian, I don't know if you have any...
The, the applicant understands the comments that the board has made, and this is similar to what was done with 90 and 98. Because when we came in, 90, 98, we showed all 12,000 square foot lots, and the board said, when you come back, you have to have some larger lots. So we, we would appreciate if the approval indicates a minimum lot size of R12, which is consistent with the master plan says. And the applicant has heard the comments of the board members, and we want to come back with a plan that, that will be approved. And we did that with 90, lots 90 and Lot 98 above, where we came back and presented a plan that did what the board asked for. It, it provided a substantial number of larger size lots, but the minimum lot sizes were under the, consistent with the R12 rather than the R15.
Gentlemen, the application is to allow construction per the R12 zoning requirements, which is fine, if, if that's what zoning board would agree to, so be it. But I, I think we should try to avoid, when the subdivision application is, is submitted, and we're having a public hearing, we should, before that hearing, advise the applicant which zone he should design the site plan, the subdivision maps for, which would include the, the issue about the access onto Neiman. I just think it makes for a cleaner application tonight, and a cleaner application when the subdivision is applied for.
Jerry, in my thought, I, I agree with what you're saying. I just have one comment, that I would rather let them come up with it, because one simple reason, they shouldn't have to ask for another use variance. But if I would see, like, out of the 23, 17 of them are like 14,000, 13,500, 14,500, I would be okay with it. And if one of them is 12,000, I would also be okay with it. As long as I see the majority onto the largest size of lots. But if he comes in with all of them at that point on 12,000, I will have then an issue. So that is my instruction to them right now, that use it...
I don't, I don't get that. Yeah, I think you need to give them more direction. They're applying to, to, to allow this property to be R12. Yes or no? If it's no, then you should tell them what you would allow them to design, you know, what the lot sizes are gonna be. Because if you say R12, you're not gonna get a 14,000 square foot lot, you're gonna get all 12,000 square foot lots.
What about, what about the chair? The, the, the problem is, once we give them the, the, the R12, then we're stuck with the maximum amount of units on R12. So what about...
Let's start with the maximum amount of units, because we can make them put a road into Neiman, and he has to take one out. But let's start with the maximum, but we're stuck with 12,000 lot size.
Yes, but Jerry, legally, we're, we're, we're really stuck to whatever they can design on an R12. I mean, yes, we can ask them for the roads and change a little bit, but we're really stuck. If they fit with 23 units, they're gonna fit 23 units.
The application tonight is to develop this property per the R12, and it's yes or no. If you say yes, you're gonna get 12,000 square foot lots, plus perhaps an access onto Neiman.
Well, this is, this is the same applicant that submitted the applications for 90 and 98, and at that point, the board approved it with the guidance that don't come back with all the 12,000 square foot lots. So that model worked with the same applicant on 90 and 98, and they came back with plans that the board have found that, that they met their criteria. So we're just saying the minimum lot size and, and a maximum density of 2.95 rather than 3.63, which is what the R12 would allow.
Mr. Flannery, I'm not saying that they shouldn't approve it as an R12. I'm just saying that the board should decide tonight, if they want, assuming they want to de, you know, increase the density, should it be...
I, I think they could put, they, they condition in that the minimum lot size would be the R12, but that a, a majority of the lots need to exceed that and, and be, you know, closer to...
But here's, here's Jerry's problem. Jerry's problem is that, yes, the minimum lot size is R12, and what happens if you bring in an application of 23, 12,000 square foot lots? So we said that it has to be bigger, but if we gave you 12,000, you're stuck, we're stuck on 12,000.
But, and, and that's why I indicated that this applicant on lots 90 and 98, you, you trusted him, and, and that's what we're talking about, a trust factor. Trusted him, and he came back with an application that...
Flannery, I only bring it up because you need five votes, and you've already heard two members of the zoning board who don't feel comfortable with the R12. That's the only reason I brought this up. If you have five votes for the R12, so be it.
I'm comfortable, if I may comment, I'm comfortable with the R12 zone. I don't have a problem with it. I think just let them do, and then we'll see where the chips fall when they come back. I'm okay with this application the way it is, especially cul-de-sac. I'm not so sure opening to Neiman is a good idea, but I'll leave that to the professionals, how they, how they present it. And I'm okay with the, with the R12 zone the way it is. I like, actually like this application the way it's set up.
Okay.
Hey, if I may, when we gave the application, when we gave approvals last time, and we told them really stick, be close to the R15, back then already, you know, it wasn't as bad, the area congested. But, you know, I've been driving that area recently, and, and basically the whole, um... Cross has been knocked down, and this, this, and, you know, as far as new development that's going in, and also James, basically, has moved on and ready to... So it's a different environment now.
Much, I agree with you. Much, I agree with you. Number one, it's, it's subject to Cross Street being expanded. And number two, it's already owned partially by a school. It's surrounded by schools. God forbid, well, I shouldn't say that's wrong, but if another school pops in there, number one is no ratables at all, and imagine the traffic after that. You got three schools within, connecting to each other. You don't want to see another school there.
No, I understand, I understand.
School to school, Neiman, West Cross.
Much, I, I don't, Much, I don't think, I don't think you're gonna have a school there. It's just a question, is it gonna be 20 houses or 23 houses? That's the whole question over here.
I think you might have multiple schools there. We just gave a, we have, we had a, on Pine Street on one acre, asking for, started with two shools, and we got, we had to fight them down to one shule. Area of multiple acres, building 12 ratable houses. These houses are gonna go for 700,000 to 800,000. I'm okay with it.
Okay, can I have a motion? I think if you could put 20 houses there, it'll be 20 shools there. 20 schools. So, uh, these are gonna be custom homes, are they not? Okay, now, Avram, yes, it's gonna be custom homes, yes. Avram, he wants to say something?
Yeah, just one, just one last thing. I think with the understanding that the, the, with the understanding that we're looking for bigger lots, just giving them the R12, that they know that the R12 is the minimum amount we're going to accept, but we are expecting to see lots that are bigger than that. I think a house today in Lakewood, an R12, is a beautiful house, is a good opportunity, single-family home. Plus, on top of that, they know that we are expecting to see some 14s, 13s, 14 and 1/2s, but we have to give them, like Jerry said, some sort of a guidance. I think the R12 is, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I just, I just want to remind the board...
Wait, wait, Mary Gilly wanted to say something.
I'm sorry, I want to remind the board, Obi. I just want to remind the board that there was a GDP that was just recently approved in that area for 532 duplexes, coming to 1,000 homes, all going onto Cross Street, all going onto Neiman, all going onto Prospect, all going onto James. By keeping it at 15,000 square feet, I think it's something that we're going to be able to sustain the people there, it'll be more greenery, because that place is going to be, no matter how wide they make those streets, it's gonna be congestion city. I don't care what anybody says. So my, my contention at this point is, I would not go for an R12. I would force them to say R15. I guarantee you, they're not gonna come back and say, no, when I'm gonna do it, they'll take the 20 homes, they'll give us access to Neiman, and the people there would love us, and they'll still sell for $700,000, $800,000, with more space and accurate, you know, a much nicer place, where you'll have less congestion than another 23 homes, which they'll come back with. Doesn't make them, I count there right now, there's five homes right there that are between 15,000 and 14,000, and 14,000. 114, 315, and 313. I saw it in the plans already. My contention is, let them do 15, uh, R15, 20 houses. The congestion there is just going to be a nightmare once everything is said and done.
And we also can approve him later if he needed a variance to do a couple small lots. It's not like it's off the table. We can, we, we can approve him then for that as well, later. But at least we're not bound to R12.
Right.
Mary Gilly? Should be forward subject to Cross being extended and widened. Who said that?
Yes, it is.
It is.
This is... You, you can't, you can't, he's not gonna get a building permit if, if Cross is not widened. The only building permit he's gonna get is on the amount of houses he can put in that is currently available to him on the, under the R40 plan. So I think he said he could only put in eight, because he has like eight acres. You can put in eight houses, and the other remainder, he can only put in after Cross Street commences and starts to work and widening Cross Street. Not widening according to any new plan, but a widening Cross Street according to the master plan of 2017.
So he'll be able to get a permit to build the lots, but not a building permit? So the lots are...
You can get a specific permit, but not...
If I could just clarify, just a question, I can clarify the answer. So again, this is step one, this is just the use variance. Should we get approved for whatever it may be, we will come back before the board for a site plan. If that site plan has 20, 21, 21, 18, whatever the number is, we agree, we're agreeing that we cannot get more than eight building permits, which is, I believe it's eight, is, is, Brian, to confirm. Whatever we could build today in the R40 zone, that's what we will be able to build until they start the construction to widen Cross Street. So that, that part won't change, and that we're, we're in agreement to. Just going back on to, to the question of R12 or R15, I, I hear what the board's indicating, and again, we, we were just, again, respectfully request a little bit of flexibility, so we don't have to ask for the use variance again. We understand, where, if we come in with 23 lots of 12,000, we're getting denied. I, I, we're, we're agreeing to that.
I don't know how we...
There are a lot of denials.
Just a moment, just a moment. Wait a minute, wait a minute. With due respect to Adam, this is allowed as the R12, you have the absolute right, and we cannot stop you from building 23 units, period. We couldn't stop you. You have...
Get an application.
Well, the applicant hears that the board wants larger lots, so they understand there would be a reduction in density.
So let's introduce a...
Density of 2.95 million units per acre.
Terribly echoing back, I can't hear anyone.
That's, that's really...
Okay.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
To what?
To what? Can we confirm, can we move the public, can we move the public, please?
Brian?
Brian?
Yes, I'm here. No comments, no comments.
No comments?
No comments?
Nope, nope.
No comments.
Okay, I have a motion for much, what's your motion?
Motion to approve...
Motion to approve...
The 12, 12, 12,000, I'm sorry, R12 zone.
Second.
Second.
Who second that?
Who second that?
Judah.
Judah. Madam, take a day roll call, please.
I would zee.
I would zee.
Mr. Gillig.
Yes.
Yes.
Langley. Langley.
Yes.
Yes.
Then Aftali, why is there an echo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bibiak.
Yes.
Yes.
Inger. Inger. Gonzalez.
Gonzalez.
Oh.
But Inger didn't answer yet.
Answered yet.
He did twice, Gonzalez.
Inger.
Inger. Yes, I'm going, I'm going to answer yes, but with the condition that they're not... Then when they come, it'll be no.
Okay.
Okay.
And Mr. Haveston.
Yeah. Okay. Good night, everyone. One minute.
The understanding, Mr. Pfeffer.
Mr. Pfeffer.
Mr. Flannery.
I did not hear what the condition was. Can we try it again, please?
Can everyone, one minute, one minute. On their screens, so we can hear Jerry.
I believe Mr. Inger said yes, but with conditions. I don't know what they were, and I don't know if the other people who voted yes would agree with those conditions. So, you know, if there's going to be a condition of any importance, and I don't know what it was, we'd have to vote on it. So, Mr. Inger, can you give us that condition again, please?
It was just letting the applicant know that I'm agreeing to the R12 at this point. But when they come back for final site plan, if the most of the lots are not closer to R15, my opinion then will be no.
Yeah, I'm telling you now, you will not be able to vote no on that. If you give, if you say it's R12, he has the absolute right to build R12 lots. And if you want a 14,000 square feet on two of them, you do not legally have the right to deny it because you said you can build for R12 standards.
But we could, we could ask them to make less amount of lots at that point.
No. No, if you allow them to build R12, now, this is taking into account the access to Neiman, and whether they might lose a lot or two as a result of that. But if you let them build R12, they have the absolute right, and I'm not saying don't do that, I'm just saying everyone should understand, that they have the absolute right to commit with 12,000 square foot lots. And if you say, oh, we wanted one for 14,000, too bad.
So we, I, we mentioned before that they had the right up to 23 lots. So I don't, I can't say 20 lots down the road, or the board can't say 20?
You can say no more than 20 lots, sure. Sure you can.
Which gives us the ability to choose how many lots we want, regardless of...
You can, you can, in my opinion, and Mr. Pfeffer can tell me differently, you can say R12, but, for instance, only 15 lots. Well, then the rest of it's gonna be green space or a rec area. But, so the lots will be, would be, for the sake of the discussion, 12,000 feet, but there'll only be 15 of them, and I'm just using that number. The rest would be green space or a rec area.
Our board, if we vote, if we prove this application, we still have the ability to say we want to...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I'm on an echo.
Yeah, I'm on an echo.
So if I were to vote in favor, you can limit the amount of lots.
Jerry, if I can, the only part I would respectfully disagree with is that the application is for up to the 23. I understand it's a 12,000 square foot standard, but with the board indicating that they need to see 12,000 plus as the average, and closer to the 15, and we have to put the road in, the 23 is still just, is the max we'd ever be able to do. However, with the note that it's gonna be more than 12,000, I believe that that would give the board the right to vote no. Should we come in with all 12,000 square foot lots and didn't comply with the Neiman, should that be the right design?
And I can assure you, the applicant has heard the intent, and the application that comes back will honor that, the same as they did the last time. And I can tell you that I will not be presenting an application that's all 12,000 square foot lots on this property.
Well, it's too loose, and I'm sorry, I really don't mean to be argumentative or obstructionist. Does that mean that you can give him five lots that are 12,500 square feet? I mean, what does that mean? Or how many of the lots will be 14,000? How many of the lots will be 13,000? How many of them will be 12? I think we need to know that.
Well, I think that a vote was taken, and five members excluding Mr. Inger voted in favor of it without a condition.
That's right.
Even if Mr. Inger isn't counted, we still have an approval. I was trying to provide assurances to Mr. Inger that he's not going to be disappointed by voting this affirmatively.
That's a very good point, Mr. Flannery, that there are already, I think, I didn't quite hear the chairman, but I'm presuming he...
Yeah, I said yes before, but I think he wants to say something. Moish, you want to say something?
Brian already said. I was gonna reassure Mr. Inger that he can stick to his no vote, and that way there'll be two people that wanted 15, and the others wanted at least 12. But even us that want at least 12, it's a loose 12. We want to see larger. But obviously, we understood what Jerry said, but I hear Obi and Moish Inger's reservation respected. And I think the applicant understood that, even from the rest of us, we would like to see, even though legally, as Jerry has explained, that 12 is 12, we would still like to see something nicer.
Okay. So is the motion approved?
Approved. What's Mr. Inger's vote?
No.
It's no? Is that what you said, sir?
If my vote is no, the application is approved, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So my vote is no.
All right.
Okay. Fine. Okay, the application is approved. Good night and good luck to everyone.
I want to thank Alex for having this legal intern with him before the elbow panel.
Okay.
Night, everybody.
At this point, I have a motion to pay bills.
Pam, please.
All in favor?
I'll send you my address also. Hi.
Okay, we're gonna get the resolutions in a minute. All in favor?
Resolution, yes.
Hi.
Can I have a favor of the resolutions?
There is no resolutions.
Okay.
Excellent.
We did not approve anything.
Good for you.
Nice meeting. We did.
Okay, guys, I wish you have a healthy summer. Enjoy your summer vacation. We'll see you back in September meeting.
Be safe.
Obi, be good, brother.
You too, brother.
Always a pleasure, Jerry.
Thank you, buddy.
Always. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Everyone, easy, fast, cultive. Bye-bye.
Next meeting.
Have a good night, Jerry.
14th.
September 14th.